Good evening, everyone. We will call the special city council meeting to order for Wednesday, August 13, 2014. The time is 5:30 PM and the purpose of this meeting is for a budget hearing for the 2015 annual budget. First order of business is the roll call.
Scott.
Here.
Drew.
Here.
Lewis. Doyle.
Here.
Wright. Estes.
Here.
Nordstrom.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wythenbach.
Here.
Laurenti.
Here.
We have Korn.
We will now recognize Gary Johnson, the Dove Christian Center, who will deliver our invocation. You are welcome to participate but not required.
Well, it's a privilege to be here. Jesus, when he was on the planet, said blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall see God. And I noticed he said peacemakers, not peacekeepers, because a peacekeeper will have peace at any price, sometimes void of truth, honesty, integrity, and those sort of things. But a peacemaker will strive to do things right and have an agreeable spirit. But, as someone said, if two people agree on everything, one of them's not thinking. This is why we have a city council. So, you know, it's really a privilege to stand here. Rapid City is a favored place. And amidst of these troubled times, it's progressive. In our forty years here, we've had people over and over tell us how blessed we are in this community. And so I want to thank you all for serving. And you are a council that I believe has been appointed for this hour. And so it's a privilege to pray for you. Heavenly Father, I ask that you be with all of these on the council as they counsel together. May they be unified. I ask you to keep them all in safety, them and their households, to keep them in health. I ask for your blessings upon them and for peace to reign, in Christ's name. Amen.
We will now, we will now proceed with, I believe it's round three, four, four of our budget hearing. And I will now turn the gavel over to city council vice president, Brad Estes. And I will remain in the chambers to answer any questions and participate in the discussion as needed.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome, everyone. As we discussed at the, to close of Monday's meeting, we kind of briefly went over what was a recap list. And, and I believe everybody has, has a recap list that was given to them. And it would be my intention tonight to just start at the top and we'll work our way through the bottom. And if, you know, we'll discuss each issue. If somebody has a motion to approve or whatever, but we'll just, we'll just try to run down each one of them and, and work our way to the bottom. I appreciate everybody's focus last meeting. This, we got a lot of different topics to talk about tonight. And hopefully, we can keep everything, everybody has a right to speak and be heard. But hopefully, we can keep our focus on each topic as, as it's presented. So, does anybody have any questions or concerns?
I don't believe it's not really an agenda. But, but, but the first item of, topic
of discussion is the CPI, which is a $201,741 line item in the budget. And I'll open the floor for discussion. First would be Charity Doyle, Alder Woman Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a question about the overall meeting. Are we, I mean, is there a consensus that we want to actually make motions and get things done tonight to be put into for a second reading of the appropriation?
My, my answer, and those that I've, I've talked to, I guess, would be to try to go through and, and we either approve or deny these items, or if we have no action, they die for lack of action. Doesn't mean somebody can't bring it up between first and second reading. But I, but I think the goal is, is to have as much business as we can have done, done tonight. And hopefully, we don't, so that at, at the last minute, between first and second reading, we have a, a significant item up for debate. Is that fair? Does anybody not agree with that? That doesn't mean we can't, that somebody can't bring something up between first and second reading. But we'd like, like to avoid that if possible.
Okay. Well, in that case, I do have questions on this first item. But Mayor has left the room. So, I can shine back in, I guess.
The Mayor's in the House. So Charity Doyle used to, Alder Woman Charity Doyle has the floor. Mayor, we're on item number one, the CPI discussion line item. Charity, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question for the Mayor, if I may. Mayor, I'm just curious. We've had, obviously, a lot of conversations about the CPI over the, the last three budget cycles. And sometimes it makes sense to take it, other times, you know, it doesn't make as much sense to take it. There are differing philosophies. I'm just curious as to why this point in time with a CPI of a couple hundred thousand, you elected to put that in the budget. Because that's one thing I at least haven't heard as to your purpose for doing that.
Mr. Mayor, if you would.
Thank you. I appreciate the question. I did cover this to some extent during the budget presentation and also during the conversation the other night. I will be happy to go further in, in depth. First of all, I think what's exciting about this conversation is that the city council has an opportunity to debate whether or not to take the CPI, which is something that they were denied in, in years past. So, the last several years, we have been able to have that conversation on whether or not to take the CPI. When I arrived in office in 2011, we did propose taking the CPI as part of the 2012 budget. In 2013 and 14, we proposed not to take the, the CPI. The 2013, 2013 and 14 amounts amount to approximately $16 per $100,000 evaluation. The amount for 2015, which is included in the budget, is approximately $5 per $100,000 evaluation. So, of the $21 per $100,000 evaluation that could be taken, this budget proposes taking five. In listening to the debate, I think there's a couple of factors that you considered, you have been considering. And I think the motion today at Allegro and Finance reflects that. One is, is that we've, we've had, we have better sales tax than expected, better numbers than what we saw in March, April, when this budget was being put together. And I, I'll tell you this, I am perfectly fine with the council not taking the CPI for next year. I think it would lessen the, lessen the impact from the sting of the stormwater utility. And so I am, based on the conversations that you have had thus far, I'm, I, again, I would be perfectly fine with not taking the CPI for next year. Although, if you look at, if you look at the three available CPIs at the time we put the budget together, it seemed that taking the one was, was reasonable. But again, I'm perfectly fine with not taking the CPI. And I'm very grateful that you guys have had a, a good discussion on this. And we'll continue to discuss it.
May I reframe the question, Mr. Chair? Did you, Mayor, intend for this $200,000 to go toward a certain thing for the overall budget?
No, it was, it was included to, to balance the, to balance the budget.
Okay. Question for Finance Officer, if I may.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Ms. Sumption, over the last, I guess it'd be four budget cycles, then how much would we have had we taken the CPI moving forward through now? If you, I have another question, if you want, like, a couple moments to look that up. And, Mr. Chair, I guess this one would be for you. I'm wondering, since I'm looking down the list, and we have these, I think some of, some of these items are included in the budget, some are not. We may want to save the CPI discussion until farther down the list and not have it decided before some of these larger ticket items on here, too.
Would you make a motion to move it to the end of the list?
I've already talked, so.
I'd entertain a motion.
To do so?
All right.
It might make more sense. Maybe you could probably.
That's fine. What, what would you guys like to start with? And council, okay. Well, we're gonna go to, Amanda, you are in the queue. Are you okay?
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna take you out.
You have it now?
All right.
Give it to me now, then, or you want to wait? We can wait. Okay.
Moving on to item number two, council raises. Alderman Steve Laurenti.
Well, I think everybody knows where I'm gonna go on this without everyone talking to me about it. But when I have to choose between increasing property taxes by taking the CPI and choosing whether to increase my own pay, that's a really easy one for me. So honestly, I'm hoping that my colleagues will see this as one of the things that we can not take, that would forego having to take the CPI, not to bring CPI back. But, so that's where I stand on council raises. And I hope my colleagues will support me in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Laurenti. We'll go to Alder Woman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Concerning the council raises, and are we talking about the Mayor's raise at this time, too, or is that a separate issue? It's all the same. The Finance Officer is suggesting that it's all the same?
I would take it as the same. It was, it was, it was a one light item, is, is a Mayor and Council raises. And, and I guess if we get to making a motion, would, would the motion maker, if we get to that point, include, make that specific?
Okay. Basically, I just wanted to bring up, you know, in looking at this, the Mayor had brought up in his presentation that the city council members had not had an increase to their compensation for quite some time. I think the fundamental question that has to be asked is, are city council members employees, such as the elected position of the Mayor is, the Mayor is a full-time employee. Are city council members employees, or are city council members doing a civic duty by serving their wards? If it's just a compensation for reimbursement, personally, I agree with Alderman Laurenti at that point. There's no reason for an increase. Or at least, I know I experienced some very, very high expenses my first two years while I was getting up to speed. And there's a lot of expense that goes out when you're meeting constituents and you're driving from here and there and everything else. But for the most part, what we're getting now covered those expenses. So if it's an employee, though, then that gets into a bigger issue. Because now you have to ask, well, how much time do you expect of your council member? Do you expect 40 hours a week? Do you expect 10 hours a week? Do you expect them just to show up Monday night for the meetings? That becomes an issue at that point. So when you're talking about compensation, personally, my viewpoint is, I have a full-time job. I see this as a contribution back to my community in representing my ward and representing the city. So with that being said, I think we're well compensated. Now, I do know a couple council members that are no longer on city council. Their concern was that if there isn't an adequate compensation or pay, we restrict the pool of people that are willing to come out and serve the community because they may not be able to afford it if they're not compensated. So I just wanted to bring up those points, just to start the conversation. Because I, and that's why I said, or asked if the Mayor's salary was included in this. Because like I said, I see them as two different things. One elected position is a full-time position. The other 10 positions are not necessarily full-time positions, or at least not, you know, allocated as full-time positions. So I'll yield the floor for now.
Thank you. We'll go to our Finance Officer, Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to point out that actually, during the budgeting process, not only did Tracy and I meet with the Mayor multiple times, but so did some of the department directors and I. And we actually encouraged him to build this into the budget for the elected officials, because it has been so long since you guys have had a raise. And because there is that concern that has been voiced to us before about getting qualified candidates, being willing to give up their time, having to take vacation from their job to do this, we hear comments over and over again that, that council members lose money with all the work and time and effort that they put into this job if they're gonna do it right. And so a 3% raise for half a year, we thought was very minimal. But yet, in the same sense, it was something that needs to start happening again. It used to happen automatically. Now it doesn't. But it definitely was encouraged by some of the department directors to include this in the budget.
Thank you, Pauline. We'll next go to Alder Woman Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with what Pauline is saying, you know. And it's unfortunate that, at least my version of what I've heard, politics came into play. So my question's actually for Mr. Wythenbach, if he's willing to entertain it. Okay?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Ron, and the question is this. I believe you were on the council when it got proposed to freeze council and Mayor's wages. Is that, do I recall that correctly?
Right. Actually, it got cut.
Oh, it got cut?
Yeah. 3%. For, at least for the Mayor, I'm not sure about the council people. But I know the Mayor's wages were cut. I believe it was 2009.
And was that, were all city employees getting cut at that time?
No, no.
Can you, do you have the backstory on that? Are you, and if you're not willing to share it, that's fine, too. But.
I'm not, I'm, no, I just, I recall that then said, our Mayor, who now, our current Mayor, proposed a 3% cut. I agreed at that time to cut the Mayor's salary. And I'm not sure if I can recall if it was the council salary at the same time. So.
Was, Ron, the same 3%?
Pardon?
Council was the same 3%?
Council, council took the, I can't imagine that they wouldn't do it at the same time. So I think everybody took the 3% cut at the same time. And the methodology was, obviously, as it is today, the same. There's, there's areas on here that we're not gonna fund, because there's lack of funding. Okay? So at that time, we, we decided it would be appropriate if everybody took a 3% cut. I'm not, I'm not even afraid of that happening tonight, if that be the case, if somebody would make that motion. I came back to this job knowing full well what it paid. I think everybody that comes in this job knows full well what it paid and what it takes. I believe that Amanda is correct on the fact that it's a public service. And I think at the time, the cuts and all those things were, were taking place, it was the same scenario. Not much different than they are today. I mean, there's never enough funding supposedly. It's.
So did that, did that cut actually go to fill in a hole somewhere? And what was, what did it go to?
No, actually, there was no direct, to my recollection, there was no direct, you know, we're gonna cut here to do this or do that. No.
Okay. And you can choose to answer this one or not. Was it more of a, hey, we're gonna throw this on the table because it's gonna look good politically? And it's hard to argue it. I mean, it's absolutely hard to argue it. And now it is the reality of what we're dealing with. And it's gonna be extremely hard to undo it.
And I agree. And I think that, I think that you find that as us, as politicians, as we are, we make political decisions. I can't speak for myself at the time. I think, you know, I, I don't know, I won't speak for anybody else, I should say, at the time. But I think that a lot of decisions that we do make are political. A lot of times, they aren't based on any facts. So does that answer the question, or?
It does. I guess I'm just thinking longer term. I'm just wondering, at what point does the stipend become unattractive to actually bring the experience? I mean, we have brilliant, experienced people in this community that, again, are gonna, you know, they, they can't afford the time away from their main jobs to come and, and do this and bring that talent to this decision-making process. And I think that's unfortunate. So there's gonna be a tipping point. I mean, and I don't know what it is. I don't think it's now. But like we were talking about with, I mean, I think Alderman Roberts said it at the last Public Works meeting, that it's easier to stomach a little increase every year. And I think we were talking, is it Parks, or, I'm not sure what we were talking, but.
Fire Department.
Fire Department, okay. Yeah. But that same concept than it is to let it go for years and then have the sticker shock of having to fix things. And I think we've done that a lot, you know. And I'm not, I'm not attached to this whole, it's, it's, it's really a bigger philosophy for me. It's not council raises, it's not Mayor's raises. It's, it's, we tend to fall into these patterns of, let's do what's easy now and what's gonna make us look good and get reelected right now. And then it gets hard to unravel. And then, so years down the road, we've inherited tremendous messes from decades ago decisions that were short-term decisions. And I just don't want to leave that for anybody decades down the road from this point forward. And it's, it's an unfortunate reality that we're most likely gonna make some of those exact same decisions tonight. I yield.
Thank you, Charity. We'll next go to Alderman Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair. And I just wanted to add to that after those comments. But, you know, for me, it's about, about being a servant. I mean, obviously, we all know, there's a lot of time involved running to certain constituent issues and that type of thing. And I get that. But I don't know about anybody else on this dais. But I think Mr. Alderman Wythenbach kind of alluded to it as well. Sees it as a service. And Alder Woman Scott as well. I mean, that's how I see it. So the bottom line for me is, it would be very hard for me to take a pay increase, knowing that we are going to, at the same time, well, whether we do or not. But it does send a message to, it does send a message to the citizens. And it's a bad message that we would take a pay increase and at the same time raise taxes on the citizens who pay for our salaries. The fact of the matter is, the, the wages, as we all know, who are on this council, a 3% increase, if that changes the quality, in fact, I honestly think the quality is pretty good on this dais. I mean, and I'm not speaking for myself, but I think most of the people on this dais that I've worked with, that I may not agree with philosophically, wanted to do the right thing for the citizens. And I think they're quality people. The bottom line is, a 3% increase, if you've calculated it, if you think that's honestly gonna bring new talent, even if you're talking years from now, 3% every year for the next eight or nine years, if we took it every year, I think we all, if you can add that up, it's extremely small. There's no way that that would increase the talent level of the council that we have. One, because I think the talent level's very good. And number two, it's a miniscule amount of money. I yield.
Thank you. We'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Oh, you caught me kind of by surprise. I was expecting somebody else.
Well, I might have.
I understand.
I thought Ron had already queued in. But I think he was just answering a question. So, but we'll go with you, Richie, if that's okay with Alderman Wythenbach.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chair. As the sentiments have been expressed already with the, my colleagues here, has to do with raises for ourselves. I can concur with that. However, but my contention would be, we should be looking at future councils, not us. And this should be looked at for, I don't know if we can do it legally, but what I would like to present is that it would be for the 2016 or 2017 council, not the 2015 council. My rationale behind that is that it would, this raise would not be for us. Yes, there is a potential of being next, next July, we could have five new council members here. But, but we don't know that. If your crystal ball is better, please let me know. But my contention would be that it would be for future councils. Another consideration is to take a look at what our President of the council and what our Vice President of the council are doing. They are doing much more work behind the scenes than the rest of us are doing. Even some of your committee chairs are very busy doing their functions. Again, that, my concept would be, again, for a future council, for that consideration. And lastly, for me, again, I came into this job knowing that what I was gonna be making, had a very good idea, after I get all the, the, what do you call it, the FICA and other withholding things, I had a pretty good idea what I was getting into. And that's not the reason why I took this job. But it should be a consideration for future councils to at least enlarge the pool of candidates that would be seeking this office. And, and again, for me especially, and I try to do this with some levity, is right now, my pay is roughly 50 cents an hour. And this 3% increase would be 51 cents. It's not gonna make a difference for me. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at right now, is that this should be considered for a future council. Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Richie. But I, I think we're tied, we're, this is a hearing for the 2015 budget. And I don't think that we can, we can obligate future, future councils. So I, your, your comments are well-intended. I appreciate them. But we'll next go to Alderman Ron Wythenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand the constraints of, the understanding of the snowball and the fact of the things that, you know, if you don't do these things now, what happens? That when I was on the council before, we had, we had to make a big decision when it came to water rates. And, and they'd been held down because of political pressures. But I'm not totally against political pressures, doing things like that. I think sometimes that's the only thing that keeps councils in check. Sometimes the political pressures can go too far and get a little bit out of, out of whack. And I, so I completely agree with that philosophy. And anybody who doesn't see that needs to take another look at it. Because those things happen. And I think that, in this case, I think there's, there's probably some room that we can forego this, this time around, and, and not really affect, you know, what's gonna happen in the future with, with, you know, getting council people to run or the Mayor to run. I think that there's been a couple Mayor racism. There's never a lack of anybody that wants that job. So you're kind of a supply and demand thing. And when I came back to the council, I had some priorities. And, and one of my priorities is on this list tonight. So I think that, this is a $28,000, I think, without looking at the numbers, $28,000, that if we forego this, we can move this into a couple different areas, far as I'm concerned, the police department's budget for their fleet vehicles or their, or their wages to get them into par. Because really, that's where we need to be thinking. That's our priority as a council person, is, is to get the most bang for our buck and provide safety, streets and sewer and water for our citizens. So my recommendation So my recommendation is, and I think somebody will make the motion, is that we forego this and move this into one of these other areas, and preferably mine would be like the, the police department's budget, and like I said, that is one of my priorities, coming back to the council after being here, watching the things that have transpired, come back with a different set of priorities. So with that being said, I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Darla Drew.
There you go. Thank you. I agree with Mr. Laurenti in the fact that we have very high quality of people that seek this job and do this job well, and put in a lot of extra time. I think if there's anything that precludes people from seeking this job, it's not money. I think it's the time commitment that's involved, and that would be the reason that, that I think a lot of people don't get involved in city council, because it's just, it's very time-consuming. It's been a big surprise for me, and, but I would have to agree with my colleagues. I, I could forego this 3% pretty easily, because I, I didn't run for this office to see if I could get more money. If that's your motivation, that's not a very good one, so, thank you.
Let's see, John Roberts, you haven't spoke yet, we'll go to Alderman, Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I ask a question, a question of Pauline?
You sure can.
Thank you, Pauline. This was already budgeted in, correct? And what was the number?
I'd have to go look back at spreadsheets to, to figure that out. Hang on.
And while she's looking for that, I'll explain why I'm asking that, is because just like Mr. Wifenbach said earlier, this is money we can move into another program. And I think that it's something that is more important somewhere else than here. And I do agree that somewhere in the future, there's gonna have to be a change in this. But I don't believe it's now. I think that, you know, 3%, if we took 3% for the next 10 years, it would only be $50 a month difference. So it's not gonna make any difference to anybody that's sitting on this dais right now, in the future at least. So as soon as you get that number, Pauline, I think we'll know how much we have to move somewhere else in the budget, I hope.
3% for half a year on all the elected officials is a mere $3,400.
$3,400, okay.
Not including any FICA retirement or any of that that would go on there, but that's what the dollar amount is.
Well, that's $3,400 more that we have. Thank you.
I hope this isn't a sign as to how long it's gonna take per dollar to discuss stuff tonight. Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we remove the mayor and council, so all the elected official raises in the 2015 budget, and if I can get a second, I'd like to retain the floor.
We have, we have a motion by Amanda Scott, a second by Alderman Laurenti to remove these, and you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. The, I think there's been a lot of discussion about the council members up here. Just a couple points I'd like to bring up, the mayor, they were pretty much really the same, because it's an elected position. And that's, anybody running for the position of mayor already knows what the salary is. All of the salaries for all the city employees are public information, so they can pretty much look it up. So if the salary is still bringing a field of people to the elected position, I agree. I think the market will set itself when all of a sudden, nobody runs. So the year nobody runs, we'll take a look at possibly increasing that salary. Other than that, just a couple of the other points, too. The mayor did convert over a seasonal or part-time position into a half-time FTE, and it did increase the mayor and council budget by $4,000. So by not taking this, that $3,400, kind of already is a tribute, or going to pay that half FTE in my mind. So when you're trying to look to move it someplace else, I...
Been moved.
Yeah, I think it's pretty much already been moved. So I think right now, we're looking at, you know, either adding or subtracting from the budget, so, I yield the floor.
Thank you. Alderman Steve Laurenti. You're out. Richie, you out? Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Does that mean our part-time staff person would get a raise then? No, I'm kidding. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those, see no other lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same as saying, passes. Wow. Move the Compass budget out of council contingency to Cost Center 6031. And that, that, Pauline, does everybody understands this? Or Pauline, would you just give us a brief rundown on, on why we have to do this?
So basically, because Compass Committee reports to the council, the mayor includes it in his budget, but includes it in the contingency line item. And that way, if you guys want to go ahead and fund it, because they report to you, then we just need to move it. It's already in the budget, this is a zero effect on the overall budget.
Thank you. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make the motion to move the Compass budget from the council contingency to 6031, the Compass budget, and retain the floor if I can get a second.
We have a motion by Amanda Scott, a second by Alderman Laurenti, to move the Compass budget out of council contingency to this Cost Center 6031 Compass. And Amanda Scott, you have the floor.
Thank you. Compass has been coming along, and I just recently was replaced as one of the committee members on Compass, but I just wanted to make a few remarks that I'm really looking forward to the audits that are coming up this year. There's a couple audits that they're working on that I really think are what the council members have been waiting for, and that is to show some improvements and efficiencies that will ultimately result in some efficiency gains, both time-wise and cost-wise. So I'm looking forward to that. Just a heads up, though, since we're talking budget, that some of those recommendations may actually ask us to fund things, increasing the budget in order to seek those gains. So it's, it's kind of a can of worms. It's, we're gonna have to take a look at it and really consider the recommendations, but I'm looking forward to it. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Thank you, Amanda. No other lights lit. We have a motion and a second to move Compass budget out of council contingency to Cost Center 6031 Compass. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passed unanimously. Third item, request for $15,000 for Sheriff Tom's Juvenile Detention, Juvenile Program. And I open the floor to Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the efforts to move this along, I make a motion to approve the $15,000, taking from undesignated cash, and to increase the police department's line item from 105 to 120 to account for this under other programs.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Amanda Scott, and a second by Alderman John Roberts, to fund this additional $15,000 for the sheriff's office. We have discussion now, we'll go to Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Amanda, for that. I just wanted to jump in here real quick and say, I think this is a great program. I think anytime that we can put money into juveniles, before they start getting into trouble, we're saving a lot of money in the long run. And I've seen some wonderful changes, I wouldn't wanna say changes, that's not the word, but I've seen a lot of wonderful change over the years out at the juvenile detention center through a lot of these programs that our sheriff and the county has been doing. And it has saved the taxpayers of Pennington County and Rapid City lots and lots of money. I remember a dozen years ago, when I first started working for the county, it wasn't uncommon to see 100 juveniles at juvenile detention at one time. And now it's uncommon to see more than 25, maybe 30 at the very top. So these programs are working, and every dollar we put into the juveniles, I think, is a huge gain in the long run. So thank you very much.
Thank you, John, for those comments. I see no other council lights. We have a motion and a second. We've had discussion on, on the request for $15,000 for Sheriff Tom's Juvenile Detention. Okay. Alternate Initiative Juvenile Program. No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passed unanimously. Now we're on to the fourth item, cemetery. This was something brought up by our council president, Jerry Wright, I believe. May, not that it's only his concern, but it's a cemetery, an additional $25,000 for headstone realignment program. And the chair recognizes Alderwoman Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I see public, our Parks and Rec Director, Jeff Beigler, is here. May I ask him a question?
Sure. Mr. Beigler, please.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm curious, this $25,000 number, I would, I would surmise that you've already looked into it, this is going to be the cost. So you've been giving this some thought?
We have been giving this some thought, and this would be something that we would, we would be requesting on an annual basis until the, and the entire cemetery was, was addressed in terms of realignment of the leaning headstones. So we have been looking into this, and we thought that this was a reasonable amount to accomplish in a year's time.
And how many years do you believe before the entire cemetery would be taken care of?
I don't have that number, but it will be several, because there are quite a few stones out there that are in need of, of realignment.
Okay, so something we need to think about tonight is, I mean, we might be able to find $25,000 for right now, but we need to, I would imagine you would just continually work that then in your budget, so it's starting 2016, it would just be automatically included?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
If you don't mind, while you're up, I guess I have a couple questions. So if, let's say, I, I had a family member headstone, can, can an individual go in there, bring equipment in, or hire somebody to bring equipment in to level their own headstones?
Yes, that's actually the intent. The responsibility for the maintenance of a headstone falls to the, the family of the, of the person who's interred there.
I'm sure you can't speak to all these headstones, but I imagine after a period of time, we, we end up with headstones where, where nobody's left around, or, or, so you end up with orphan headstones, I guess.
Well, that's exactly right, and that's what prompted this, this item to come up. Alderman Wright and I were out at the site, and we did, there are a number of stones, and there are a lot of them that are old stones, and the, the deceased may be two or three generations ago, and, and the families of those folks may not even be aware that it's their responsibility to maintain the stones. So there are a number of them that, that are just not being attended to.
Thank you. We'll next go to Alderman Steve Laurenti, if I could bother him over there.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Beigler, if you would, thank you for being here. My first question on this is, is there something that brought this about? I mean, are there certain events that have occurred, or is this just some, something that's been identified by your department, or have there been complaints?
It's been identified for a number of years, and there just haven't been the funds available to, to initiate a program like this. I know that Alderman Wright was out and had a, an instance where there was a veteran's stone that was in need of some, some work, and some of the veterans pitched in and had that work done. And I think that's what prompted this to come to the, to the top of, of the conversation this time.
Next question, why not budget it in the 2015? When, can you explain why that, this would not be already in your budget?
It, it actually, the budget had already been submitted when, when Alderman Wright and I discussed this, and when we, we wanted to just include it in there, but the budgets had already been printed and delivered to the mayor's office. So we, we came at the first budget presentation time, just to, to make a point that this get considered. If, if we had discovered this or discussed this earlier in the season, it would have been included in the, in the budget that was presented.
Have there, thank you. Next question, have there been any attempts by your department to contact family members of the ones that are in worse condition to, being as this is a responsibility of that family? Did, have we made those attempts? Have we, do we have a process for that?
We do not have a process for that. To, to do so, we'd be going through, we'd be going through actually file card index card systems, trying to find an address that, that may have been given to us, you know, years and years ago. And, and a lot of times, there was only one address or one phone number given. It would require quite a bit of investigation. Now, saying that, we are going through a process of instituting a new software program at the cemetery that will increase our ability to have all of that information available much more readily.
And when do you, when do you, sorry, when do you expect that to be online?
We are currently having that program loaded onto one of our computers, and so it will probably be within the next couple of months. Now, having said that, there's an awful lot of information that still needs to be loaded into that from our current paper records. So having it up and actually functional, well, functional and usable will probably be next summer sometime.
Okay, so given that, would it be worth foregoing spending this money at this point? Because would it not, with this software, will we, let me ask the question then before I jump there, with the software, and once we have all of the information transferred, will it give us this new software system, give us the, a greater ability to contact families who have headstones that are in need of repair or, or placement, or that type of thing?
Right.
Easier? Will it make that process easier?
It will make it easier for the, the recent burials out there, but for the stones that have been out there for a number of decades, the, the information that we'll be putting into our new software program is the same information that we've got, which is limited. And we may not be able to find relatives of, of the owners of those lots. I mean, it will make it easier, yes. Will we be able to find all of the owners? I'd say no.
And I appreciate your, your responses, and I guess my final statements here are that I think honestly, that we're jumping the gun a little bit here, not knowing what can be done by a process that's set in place with the new software program, which would greatly reduce probably the costs. I don't know how many of the families will be able to be contacted and what kind of response there would be, but I think that would be part of the reason why we might wanna wait and see, especially since the current responsibility rests with those families, that we can not pass this cost on to the taxpayers for those particular issues there at the cemetery. So I'd just like my colleagues to think about that. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. We'll next go to Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to start by making a motion that we dismiss this item from the 2015 budget for this time. If I can get a second, I'd explain why.
We have a motion by Amanda Scott, and a second by Alderman John Roberts to, to dismiss this budget request, and Amanda, you still have the floor.
Thank you. I resonate with Alderman Laurenti's comments and questions. The issue that I have with this being brought so late is that I understand that the cemetery fund is twofold. There's a piece of it that's out of the general fund, which is sales tax fees and property tax-driven, and then there's also a enterprise fund?
It is an enterprise fund.
There is no general fund? Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna get to a misassumption, but so, but, so there's no line item in the general fund, however, for many years now, we transfer general fund money over to help supplement this supposedly business-like enterprise fund?
Correct. Cemeteries will never be a true enterprise fund, and so in the past, we have supplemented with the transfer out of general fund, and actually, in the 2015 budget, there is still a $25,000 transfer out of the general fund into the cemetery fund to help fund their annual budget. So if you increase the cemetery budget by 25,000, that means you increase that transfer from 25,000 to 50,000.
Thank you for that explanation. And so the reason that I would just as soon deny this, twofold. I understand this is a very sensitive issue. There are a lot of orphaned headstones, as we're referring to them. There's some family members, there's contact information we cannot find. No disrespect for the unaligned headstones that are sinking or out of place or in disrepair. But if we haven't started on this program, I really think the city needs to take the time, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and the city council need to take the time to figure out how we're going to fund this realignment program, and then decide which funds it should come out of, because it... Because it may very well be that this may be an item that should go through CIP or through the Vision Fund and use sales tax dollars rather than put the burden on the fees and the property tax owners in order to fund this worthwhile program. So, first of all, I want to agree, I think it is the city's responsibility to take care of the grounds that we own and have, you know, old residents that are still in memory for a lot of people. But I'm just thinking, we have time. And so, I'm trying not to be insensitive, but I want to make sure we do it the right way. So, that's why I've made the recommendation that we really take a good look at this and maybe realign either a supplemental appropriation when this has been truly vetted out, instead of just tagged on to an ordinance for the 2015 budget. I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Amanda Scott. We'll next go to Alderwoman Darla Drew.
Mr. Beigler, do you know approximately how many headstones, or how much $25,000 would you actually repair? It doesn't seem like very much money to me.
Well, it's not very much money, but it, we thought that it was an amount of money that was workable, that we could get done on an annual basis. I'm guessing probably in the neighborhood of 200 or so stones could be realigned for that amount of money.
Don't you think that ground shifts and just natural phenomena would make those stones, you know, unaligned again in a matter of years?
Well, most of the older stones, the ground beneath them have settled probably as much as they will settle.
Okay. So, these are, they've fallen into disrepair over a period of how many years?
Oh, some of them, probably, you know, 50, 80, 100 years.
Well, I need to echo Amanda's comments here. No disrespect, but I feel like the money could be better spent on the living, and so I will probably vote against this.
Next, go to Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hey, Jeff, I have a few questions. One, have you explored possible grants on doing a project like this?
No, we have not.
I think that might be one option that we may look at. Another one, I think, that possibly, this would be a good community fundraising project. I think this is something people in the community could get behind. But I don't think that it's necessarily something that needs to come out of the taxpayers' pockets, when the fees for this should be taken care of, some of this long-term, you know, care. And on that question, when is the last time that we took a fee hike at the cemetery? I know--
Just last year, we did.
Last year?
Yes.
Was it pretty substantial? I can't remember.
I think it was only 5%.
5%?
Yeah.
And is that something that you're going to start trying to write into the budget a little more often? I mean--
Well, we will actually monitor that and come back before you with increases when they are appropriate, yes.
Roughly, how much of that cemetery is full right now?
Oh, I don't have that number. I think we've got probably, I think the build-out date is probably another 20 or 30 years.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jeff. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I understand it's a sensitive issue, and--
It's fine, I'm not there.
Coming from Europe, my family comes from Europe, and my grandfather's buried in Czechoslovakia, so his grave is still there, and the German government pays for it to be saved there. Other than that, they pretty much ask for fees every year from the family, or they unearth you and dispose of your remains. I'm not suggesting that here, but what I am suggesting is that, I think that obviously this is not going to get put into budget this year, but I think that it's important that we make some hard decisions. And I'm not sure that I have my arms around how that cemetery enterprise fund works, so I'd be willing to spend some time with you, Jeff, and see, and maybe Jerry and whoever else, to maybe come up with a solution that's viable. I mean, if we've gotten 50 to 80 years or 100 years out of some of them headstones that we didn't plan accordingly, then I think we have some responsibility to do it. So, I think that the council would probably feel the same overall, but just not right now. I think there's, if we take the time to put together a good plan, I think we'll come up with something that'll work. So, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one, do you have any idea what a plot costs?
Oh, I should have brought that with me. I don't have that.
I was just curious if a person put an incremental raise in and had a stone realignment fund that you just--
Long-term?
Long-term realignment fund, or something, you know, if you, everybody has their reserves accounts. But anyway, we have nobody else in the queue. We have, excuse me, we have our finance officer, Pauline Assumption.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The power of the internet. Adult grave, if it's prepaid for, is $693.76, and if it is at the time of death and they haven't already paid for it, it's $728.95.
So, $700?
Yes.
Thank you, Pauline.
Sure.
Thank you. Interesting. We have a motion on the floor to dismiss this budget request of $25,000, seeing no other debate. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passed unanimously. The denial passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Native Sun News' request, it was in the finance officer's budget for $40,000. I believe, first, I'll go to Pauline Assumption. Whoa, no, I'm sorry. I do not need to go to Pauline Assumption. We'll first go to Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is actually a carryover from, for quite some time now, and the discussion, from what I remember, revolved around reaching out, the mayor was interested in reaching out and getting the information about the city and the city ordinances and what was going on in the city of Rapid City to more people. And so, we do have the Rapid City Journal, which is our primary paper, and that is our official paper. And so, legally, there are certain items that we have to publish, and so, we use our primary paper in order to do that. The Native Sun News is a weekly paper, and the concern was even taking a look at switching primary papers, classifications, or even adopting two papers as publications or primary publications, is that the timeliness of a weekly paper would delay a lot of our start dates, or the, because our ordinances have to have 20 days before they take effect after they're published and that type of stuff. So, my memory serves me correctly, we did talk about a trial run, or trying to get some more information into the Native Sun News. And so, I know when I was visiting with the mayor, he'd indicated that the reason he put that in there was to reach more people. I'm not opposed to trying it out, because personally, not knowing the media business and stuff, $40,000 sounds like a lot of money to me. And being a weekly paper, I'm not so sure the city would spend $40,000. So, I'm for trying it out. I do not believe that as, since it's not a primary paper, that it needs to be in the finance budget. I think if the city council is going to consider allocating some money, I think it should be in the mayor and city council's publication line, if we want to try to reach more people with city information. So, those are my comments at this time. I'll wait and see what the pleasure is of the other council members. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll next go to Alderwoman Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to rehash a conversation I had with Jackie Gallego. We both agreed that minutes in and of themselves are not going to fulfill the purpose of building bridges, if you will. However, we made it known that it would be nice to see somebody from the Native Sun News here, and she's got her tonight, perfect, to cover it and to write that. So, what I said to Jackie was, if that $38,000 could go to staffing a person, so that we can write real articles, and she says, "Well, you know what, Charity? What we're going to do is put a segment in there called Inside Rapid City." And I think it's beautiful, and I think it's perfect, and I would love for Jackie to approach the podium and affirm that that is going to happen, if you would.
Thank you. And I did want to tell you, we do have Jackie Gallego in the house, and she's going to the podium, and she's available for, we cannot take a presentation from her, but she's available for questions. So, you have the floor.
Thank you. So, this $38,000, obviously, we'll be publishing minutes, and I guess it would be open for conversation after I'm done talking, what, where it's going to come from. But if it passes tonight, my understanding is that that will help you keep a staff presence from the Native Sun News here, so that we can get the communication going, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And would you like to introduce your staff writer to us tonight?
This is Karen Eagle, and she's one of our two in-house staff writers.
Okay. And is, so, that is a commitment on your part to have a presence at the meetings, at least the city council meetings, and ask those questions, and be able to disseminate that information?
Very much so, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I yield.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Alderwoman Darla Drew.
Could you remain at the podium for just a minute? I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
What is your circulation numbers? Do you know?
We print for statewide about 5,500 papers, and we have a pass-along rate through the reservations of six point per paper that we have. So, our readership is over 30,000 per week. In that, we are statewide with that, we go to nine reservations. And I know you're more interested in the Rapid City area, which we have about 900. With that population, we'd come out about 5,000 readers per week.
I see you recently went to an internet version of your newspaper?
Yes, we are doing this right now. If you want a, the paper to be viewed, you can get it on internet, and it is the full paper in color, better than what you can get from actual pudge-nation of the paper. And we are also looking at changing our webpage that will be coming up. We have two ladies from New York coming out from the university to help us set that up and to do digital, which will be readable on a notebook of some kind. That will be coming up by the end of the year, and we're looking to do a grand opening on the 29th of December for the massacre.
And is it my understanding that Karen's articles will also appear on your internet version as well?
Yes.
I think this is an important thing, to continue this outreach to the American Indian community, especially in western South Dakota. I feel that this is very important, and a lot of my American Indian friends read those papers religiously and cover to cover. So, thank you for providing this great resource for our community and western South Dakota, and especially for our native family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And let's go to Mayor Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of comments. First of all, it's been a privilege as a city council member and as mayor to get to know the folks at the Native Sun News. I think they do a tremendous job of covering our community, and they have been covering our community for some time, and they have been including city hall coverage in their coverage. And I think it's important also note that simply because you might not see them at every meeting, doesn't mean that there's not articles showing up about the meetings, because they have access to, just like everyone else does, to watch the meetings online. And so, just because you don't see a newspaper reporter in the audience, doesn't mean that a story isn't being written. So, that's just one thing to keep in mind as we move forward. I think it's also important to keep in mind that the Rapid City Journal is the newspaper of record and remains a newspaper of record, and the Native Sun News is willing to publish at the rate that they provided in the RFP last year, which is, you know, significantly less than the daily newspaper rate. And so, I think we are getting a good deal by doing this. But what we would only be publishing items that wouldn't delay hearing notices, you wouldn't have hearing notices, Platts, certain types of licenses. It would be, basically be the minutes in job postings and that sort of thing. Regarding Amanda Scott's suggestion on having it in the mayor's office budget, it doesn't matter to me which budget it is in. I will tell you that if it's moved to the mayor's budget, I will delegate to the finance office to do the publishing. They'll just send the bill to the mayor's office cost center. So, it doesn't make a difference to me. I think for the sake of ease, it'd be probably easier to have it come from the finance office cost center. It's one less process for them to manage. But I'm okay either way, especially if it means getting your support for keeping this in the 2015 budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll go to, excuse me, we'll go to Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'd like to make a motion that we support this where it is right now in the auditor's budget. I, our finance budget, I'm sorry, I was thinking of something else.
We need a second. You make a motion?
Yes.
Got a second by Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I should have asked if I could hold the floor to speak for a minute.
Go ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you. I think this is a wonderful idea. I think it's about time. I think that we need to get out and reach out to our Native American friends a little bit more. I think at times, we forget that there's 20,000 of them in our community, and not only are they, you know, our old friends and family, but we have a responsibility to them, just like we have everybody else in Rapid City. So, I'm proud to be doing this tonight, and I think that's a great thing. Thank you.
Next, go to Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm also going to support this as well, and I thank you for bringing forward this suggestion, and thank the mayor for bringing this up and putting it into our budget for consideration. Primarily, what I'm interested in this is to absolutely do the trial run, give it a year, see where we're at by the end of next year, and hopefully, we'll have some good reports by that time. The other part of it I'm interested in is the competition that you'll be generating. That little bit that you're able to do for us, your portion of the competition, I whole heartedly support. And I don't need to reiterate what the other council members said about working with the native community, but I think it's a very good idea. The only other caution, not caution, the suggestion is that I have, is to encourage having a news reporter here. The reason I like to see a reporter here is that that's the time we get interviewed by reporters, plural, from other media outlets. So, if we get a chance to have that opportunity for communication, right after a major decision is made with the native community, I really hope that you'll be able to follow through with that. So, I'm looking forward to having more conversations with the Native Sun News. Thank you. Nice to meet you for the news reporter. Congratulations, and welcome.
Alderwoman Charity Doyle.
Okay. After listening to this dialogue, Mr. Chair, I just have to say one thing. I don't, I don't think anything's really going to be accomplished in just a year. It's going to be a process, you know, like we've been talking about, just long-range. So, I think if we're only going to entertain this for a year, it's, I think, very counterproductive. So, I would just hope that that leaves the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. No other names in the queue. We have a motion by Roberts, second by Richie Nordstrom, to keep the $40,000 line item for Native Sun News in the finance office's budget. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you. Good debate, discussion. Next item is Lifeways. As you all recall, they have $50,000 in the budget, and they threw some cuts through some other agencies. They've asked for an additional $10,000. And we go to Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to make a motion to add this $10,000 to the budget.
We got a motion, a second by--
And, yeah, that's exactly what I was going to ask Pauline about, probably undesignated cash. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, we got a motion by John Roberts, a second by Richie Nordstrom again, to add, supplement Lifeways' budget on undesignated cash by an additional $10,000. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm done.
All right. Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There was some questions that came to my mind, and they were talking about their federal funding being cut. And that night, I went home and I started thinking about it, and obviously, I appreciate what they do in the community. I'm a big supporter of the youth in the community. I think that the youth are very important to our community, and if we can get out of front, like Alderman and Roberts had talked about earlier, that's a great thing. But one of my concerns is that the federal funding, if their federal funding gets cut, what happens to their program? And I, you know, I just want us to be aware of that. If-- If their federal funding gets cut, this is obviously going to be a shortfall, this isn't going to do anything. So at that time, you know, we need to be aware of that, so.
Don't believe we have anybody from Lifeways, no, Paul isn't here.
I'll yield the floor.
All right, thank you. We'll next go to Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understood this to be a cut from the state government, is where I understood it, the $10,000. It was the federal-
It was pass-through money.
Pass-through for, so the state does have some involvement in this, and so they could also speak to it as well. The other part of it is, as Alderman Roberts alluded to earlier, is that this is an intervention program that has been successful in other areas, and this would be in conjunction with what Alderman Roberts has suggested. That's the reason why I'm supporting it, and if we get this intervention at the beginning of troubles with the youth, we can probably even do better than the 2025 people that are winding up in JDC. So I look forward to having this supported. Thank you.
Thank you, Richie. We'll next go to Alderman, let's see, John, you spoke, so we'll go to Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to point out, for clarification, what I heard, because I specifically asked the question on the funding of this, and wanted to clarify some information from Alderman Nordstrom. The state is currently contributing zero money to this. It is strictly federal funds that they were just redistributing. So the state is not participating at all. So, and in answer to that, that's why I am in support of this, is because we need to recognize that this is a very, very important issue that does need to be funded, because I think it does promote wellness all the way throughout our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll next go to Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I was going to reiterate those points too, but I think that one that should be brought up is that Lifeways does plan on talking to our state representatives and our state senators, and I think that we should take a strong stand behind this. If they need help from us in the future, going to the state, I would hope that this council would stand firm and support this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no other lights in the queue, we have a motion by Roberts, a second by Richie Nordstrom to add, supplement Lifeways' budget by an additional $10,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda, stormwater utility budget, and, go ahead, Charity.
This doesn't pertain to a specific item, but I think it would be helpful if we could have the finance officer tell us the, once again, projected amount of unencumbered cash, since we seem to keep dipping into that right now, and kind of keep it a running total of what we're doing here. Thank you.
That would be a great idea. Paul, finance officer, Pauline Sumpson, did you got your little calculator over there? Can you tell us what we've spent so far?
First of all, without the CPI, let me step back. When the mayor and I were putting the budget together, he asked me how much could I stomach in undesignated cash? I told him $2 million. Without taking, with taking CPI, we're at 2.1 million. Without taking CPI, we're at 2,367,854. And with the changes thus far, it's an additional 21,7, plus whatever the retirement and FICA and stuff is for not taking the mayor's, or less, what those things for not taking the mayor and council raises. So we are about, we're getting close to $400,000 more than what I am comfortable with.
You come up with 21,7, because we've spent 15,000 and 10,000 less, what we've saved on the salaries, is that what the deal is?
Correct.
Thank you, because all the other items were actually in the budget, we're just reaffirming them.
Correct.
Okay, is that the recap you were looking for, Alderwoman Doyle? You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. From notes, previous conversation on, I don't know which round of budget hearings this season, I have a number of 788,609 remaining over and above your comfort level, and that's not what I'm hearing you say right now. And that was a number given probably two meetings ago. I had a, oh, go ahead.
The stormwater utility budget is just a formality, I believe. If we could work on that, and then Pauline could give you the answer, do we want to-
Well, I'll just tell her what I had, just so she can kind of reconcile that, and I'm okay with waiting. What I have in my notes, and of course I found it after I asked the question, but it's not shaken out with what you just said, 3,655,963, end of 2014, and that was without the CPI, I believe. And then with the amount of undesignated cash that went to balance the 2015 budget, there was a remainder of 788,609. So, I yield.
And that's where I thought you were coming from with that question, I was just trying to verify. The 3.6 million is not what I feel comfortable with, that is merely what I am projecting the undesignated cash to be.
With or without balancing?
Prior to using the 2.3 to balance, so that would only leave about 1.3 left of undesignated cash projected out there. So the more you add to the budget, that number would diminish.
And you like to keep a minimum of 2 million? It looks like we might be keeping a minimum of 1 million.
I'd like about 1.6.
But we're already below that?
That we would keep, yes.
Okay.
Because I only wanted to use 2 million in undesignated cash.
So just know we're giving her more gray hairs every time we do this.
All right, we're going to thank you for the information. Next item on the agenda, or on the list, not agenda, is the stormwater utility budget, and what needs to be adjusted in the budget is reduce line item 7402-4371 to $550,000 to reflect the new revenue projections. And then are those, are their spending, I don't have the budget right in front of you, are those, are equal spending reductions in within that budget line item?
Correct. This would cut that budget line item by 1.7 million, which is the difference in the estimated revenue projections.
Okay, all right. So in the queue we have Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I buzzed into the queue to discuss the stormwater utility, but if I may make one comment, due to the concern of the gray hairs of our chief financial officer, I do also want to give the other side of the fence, and that is that the revenue side of the 2015 budget is very, very conservative on the sales tax driven. So in all honesty, or I shouldn't say honesty, in my calculations of where we stand, the finance officer is predicting that we'll have a little over $3 million at the end of 2014. My figure comes out 5 million. So there you go with your plus or minus 2 million. So we'll wait and see. She may have some line item things that are coming up under supplemental appropriation that I'm not aware of, so we'll wait and see if that comes forward. So now to the stormwater. If we're reducing this and we're reflecting this down 1.7 million, and we're reducing it to the 550, may I ask the chief financial officer a question?
You may.
This is still based on the 4 million original budget, right? So we're still looking at not taking into effect any of the rate changes that were considered under Public Works and are going to the council meeting Monday night?
Correct. This is based on, what is in the appropriation ordinance right now is for the 4 million. The direction at the time, because obviously Public Works hadn't made a determination yet, was to cut it to the new revenue projections. Now, once the council makes a determination on what to do with the ag property, that could further adjust this, but I don't know how much or where Mr. Walter Storff would like to take that from at that time. More than likely it would still be the same line item, because this is where the improvements are.
So procedurally, by making a motion, if one of my colleagues would make the motion to adopt this as the change to the proposed budget, and that passes second reading, depending on what the stormwater utility fund actually generates, based on the decisions that the council makes on the rate changes, and the assessment role, once it's applied, that would just come through as a supplemental appropriation to readjust those?
You know, typically, probably not. And I say that because our enterprise funds do revenue projections all the time, and they probably update them on a fairly regular basis, and we don't adjust the budget every time. And typically, if it's a decrease in the budget, there really is no need to go ahead and make that adjustment. If it's an increase, with enterprise funds, we're not required by law to supplement their budget, because they are an enterprise fund, they are only spending the money that they have, and that would be the same in this case. They're only going to be spending the money that they have, whether it's technically budgeted or not, but to me, it would, it'd be a futile step to decrease their budget just because they have, yet again, new revenue projections.
Thank you for that clarification. So by handling this in a motion tonight, it pretty much sets the budget like all other enterprise funds, and then we'll just wait for updates to come through.
Correct.
All right, thank you, I yield the floor.
Thank you. Next on the queue is Alderman Steve Lorente.
Thank you, Chair. This is something new. I haven't talked to anybody about it until just a minute ago. I just, but I've thought about it since I had a conversation with one of the businesses who called me about the stormwater drainage utility. But I'd like my colleagues to think about this, and maybe we need to move some action on it if there's some that agree with me, but we have businesses that are in direct competition with the city, like golf courses, for example. And these golf courses have incurred a huge increase in the stormwater utility. And granted, there needs to be support there, and I approve the stormwater utility, but the fact of the matter is, from my understanding, these golf courses are, the private golf courses are incurring about a six-plus thousand dollar bill for the stormwater utility. The city-owned golf course, however, of course, does not bear that cost. So the difficult side for private golf courses is to somehow survive, because the only way that they can maintain profits is if they raise rates. But unfortunately, they have to compete with the city golf course to be able to do that. And so it makes it very difficult for private golf courses. So something for us to think about and maybe add to, and maybe there's some adjustment where maybe they're paying less, they're still contributing, because I think they should. But I think from the standpoint of having to compete with a city-owned golf course, that we should probably try to make some concession for these businesses in our city who contribute to our tax base tremendously, beyond the fact that they've now got to somehow soak up this large stormwater utility bill that they've been presented in the last two or three weeks. So something for us to think about. Thank you.
Soak up? Good one. Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
It's been a while since I've gotten to the queue. I almost forgot what my original question is. But Jeff, can you elaborate just a little bit about what your golf fees are compared with the private enterprise? Have you got that data right off the top of your head?
Our recreation division manager is currently looking at all of the courses throughout the area, the municipal courses, and their rates for season passes, daily passes, all of those sorts of things, and making a comparison to what we charge at Meadowbrook. We are right around the middle of the pack, in some areas, some areas a little bit lower. But we're right about the average of most of the courses that are in the area. And those actually include courses on eastern part of the state, Sioux Falls, Yankton, Brookings.
Mr. Chair, I had a fair, very fair question asked of me, what does this have to do with the budget? A very fair question, and the reason I'm asking this line of questions is because the issue was brought up, so I'm just doing a follow-up on the proposal and seeing how that would affect our line item 7402-4371. So with that data being available, to answer the question why I'm asking that as a budget question, for me, that decision would be making a difference on what we would be doing for the utility maintenance fund. Thank you, I'll yield the floor.
Thank you. Just from my perspective, this is just simply mechanics within our budget based upon the projections. Now, what we end up doing with our stormwater ordinance, or what we might do with our rate structure at a future council meeting is a different topic, and I do think we have special things to think about. But this is just a clean, as I understand, Pauline, this is just to kind of clean up the budget to be more, a more accurate reflection of what's going on right now, and it's still subject to change based upon what we do with the ordinance.
That is correct.
Thank you. We'll next go to Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make that motion that the stormwater utility budget be reduced on line item 7402-4371 to $550,000 for the 2015 proposed budget.
All right, we got a motion by Alderwoman Amanda Scott, second by Alderman Ron Wyffenbach, and I'm not going to read that whole thing again, unless you want me to, Michelle, Charlene, I mean. Anyway, I see no other discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? If it's all right with Alderman Lorente, I'm going to move his questions down towards the bottom right before we do CPI, because it's more philosophical, I think, by my department. I'm going to do it. Next item is, next item was an item brought up by Alderman Ron Wyffenbach, I believe, an additional $185,000 to bring police department wages up to Pennington County Sheriff's Office I see no names in the queue. Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll reiterate myself again. I appreciate the opportunity, and I'd asked Pauline to bring this number forward. And is it too late to make a motion now, as I started talking?
What's that?
I wanted to make a motion, and I got ahead of myself there. I wanted to make a motion to approve this to the budget.
No, I'll recognize your motion. If you get a second, you can discuss it.
Richie, I'll let you, after I, I just wanted to say I'll reiterate this, this is part of my priorities. I'm going to stand tall on this one, and I hope that my colleagues can see that there's an opportunity here. Between both of these next two motions I'll be making, or Richie will help me make, we're going to add about $300,000 to the budget. So if people have questions on it, or if there's other protocol that needs to be met, then this at least puts it out on the table. Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor, a motion by Ron Wyffenbach, a second by Richie Nordstrom to add $185,000 to bring the police department wages up to the Pennington County Sheriff's Office wages. Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may address some questions to the finance officer, please?
Please do so.
Thank you. And I also believe Mr. Jeff Barbeer is here as well, but Pauline, you might be able to answer this to start with, or we can always toss it over to Mr. Barbeer. But I believe the police department is a unionized, and so their wages just went through a agreement, negotiated agreement, that the city council approved here recently. I see Jeff approaching the podium, so I don't think this is appropriate for the city council to increase wages unless we were going to designate it for new FTEs or something like that. Isn't that correct, Jeff?
Well, thank you, Alderwoman Scott. The situation at this point is that a new contract was signed with, between the city and the fraternal order police. It began on January 1 of this year, and it was a three-year contract. So very specifically, in one of the appendix of that contract, it lays out what the wage increases will be and how the formula will work over that three years. I don't think anybody is opposed to taking a look at this and trying to, you know, trying to see that for starting police officers, that we can equal the county. But right now, there is a contract, and we are absolutely just in the infancy of starting to negotiate with the union and talk about, we don't want to reopen the whole contract and renegotiate the whole thing, you know, the time and expense to both sides would be immense. So if we can deal with the union and open for just this one item and have those discussions, we would like to do that. Nobody's opposed to it, but, you know, this is probably a little bit premature to just throw money at it before we know any specifics, because we would have to formally change the contract, probably sign an MOU to change that appendix specifically.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you for that clarification. And Pauline, did you have anything else to add?
Personally, I would just caution you in doing this, any part of it, we have four different unions that we've just signed four different contracts with that just started January 1 of this year. And I fear that you open one, you better be prepared to open all four. And everybody could have an argument as to, I'm losing staff, I'm not comparable to other markets, I have retention issues. And so every, I just would caution you because every single one could give you an argument. We do interest-based bargaining for a reason, and all parties agreed to the wages for this year. This is what was negotiated. And so with that, I would also add that there are other things that have been provided to you to look forward to for 2016 on FTE needs throughout the city in the general fund, and this could hamper anything that might be needed in the future. Because this is not a one-time expense, it would be an ongoing expense. So just very much caution you, as well as the fact that it would be funded with undesignated cash if you do it at this time. And I don't want to, you add it to the budget, and honestly, the city has no negotiation anymore because the department, the FOP knows what's been budgeted for. And you show your hand in that, you better plan on spending every penny of it then if that's what you want to do.
Thank you. And then just some other points, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong.
Excuse me, Amanda. Guys, could we, like?
Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but also, part of that negotiation as well was the wage scale, and it was for a three-year contract, and we adjusted it. And that doesn't preclude us, as you said, from opening up negotiations or taking into consideration. But I know that the council's concern a couple of years ago was including more officers, more FTEs, and that the negotiated contract adjusted recently the wage scale. So I want to applaud Alderman Wyffenbach in his encouragement and support of the police department, but I believe the council, over the last two years, this has been a priority for us. And I would hate to, I would hate to do a knee-jerk reaction in trying to live up to the Joneses next door, be in the county department, without methodically going back through and taking a look. Because I do think the wage structure affects the entire city, not just one department. So I do applaud you and your support of the police department. I support the police department as well. But I do believe our police officers know that they have all of our support on their side. And I do believe that they're at least on their way of being compensated fairly, and I do believe that we're working on it. So I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This brings me back to my original thought that escaped me a few minutes ago. It has to do with priority-based budgeting. And I look at Mr. Limbaugh out there in the audience, and we kind of look at each other every once in a while, and we chuckle about how this process that we're doing right now. So if we can get into priority-based budgeting in the future, I think this will be a very big benefit for us. What I've done also is to check with the other unions, I guess you could call it on an official basis. I did visit with the other unions, except for the stagehands. Those are the only ones that I haven't been able to contact. But I did check in with the other unions, and they are seeing this. They looked at it, they reviewed it, and they haven't brought anything in additional forward to counter what Chief Jaggers is presenting here as bringing in forward an MOU. And that's all it would be, is just an MOU for the police department only. We've done MOUs for other unions in the past, so the precedent has been established already on just one very specific item to going through the MOU process. And with all due respect to our chief financial officer, is that one of the things that I've gained through interest-based bargaining is that we do not keep anything close to the vest anymore. We put our cards out on the table from both sides, so we understand what is on the table, what's available. And through the IBB process, we actually have a better understanding how the process needs to work. And I fully support the process of interest-based bargaining through that negotiation style of process. And it works, it really does work when that is done correctly. And with those comments, I will still remain in support of that number being public so that the FOP actually knows the number that we're able to come up with. And the other comment that I have is, if I would have known a little bit more about this designated cash, and that's my fault, not anybody else, that was available, I would have been able to make some better decisions and choices on some of the other previous budget items that we were talking about. So the next time we get this opportunity, priority-based budgeting, this process will not be going through in an agenda process like what we're doing tonight, but we'll actually go through a priority-based budgeting process. Well, thank you. Yield the floor.
Alderwoman Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to say, as I recall, after the unions finished negotiating their contracts last round, council got together, we sat at tables down on the floor, and they each came in and presented what they did and their strategy. It started out as a collective kind of a thing, and they realized, even the individual unions realized, that these departments are so different that they could not be treated the same. And nobody's going to argue with me that the police department obviously has different risks and different things to take into consideration. If you look at our attrition rate, it's well, I mean, it's nice and steady. But after the August 2, 2011 event, in the year 2012, we had a lot higher. And it's because a lot of these young officers, you know, you can sit in a classroom, but you can't ever truly be prepared for getting shot at. You don't know how you're going to react. And so I just think you can't really lump everybody into the same category. And if the unions can finally come to an understanding that they can recognize the differences, I think we ought to follow suit. And with that said, obviously, I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Next up, Alderwoman Darla Drew.
I have a question, and I don't know if it's this gentleman here or maybe one of the officers back there. But I'd like to know where this figure originated, where this 185K. It's from Ron?
Pauline, I think Pauline could probably answer that question.
Okay. When I sent the questions out to Chief Jaggers, he gave me the general guideline that it would be approximately 3% more for the sworn officers in the FOP. We typically give them a spreadsheet showing what the wages should be for the following year. So I went through their employees, gave the 3% to those employees, tacked on 20% for retirement, via Medicare, and we come up with $185,000.
So it was you and Chief Jaggers working?
Gave me the 3%, and then I figured out the number.
Okay. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff, can I ask you a question real quick? With the new contract, if I remember right, there was two different raises falling within one standard cost of living raise and another raise that was tied into the sales tax?
For the FOP, you're talking this year?
Yes, for the FOP.
This year, it was a little bit different. The raises were guaranteed this year for the FOP. We knew that their starting wage for beginning police officers was a problem. We had fallen behind the county as well as some other agencies. So they received a 5% increase, which was a cost of living increase, as we'd call it. It raised their entire pay scale by 5%. And then, again, on July 1, they received what we would call half a step, which is a longevity increase of 1.25%. So the FOP members received a total of 6.25% this year.
And what was the starting wage of a police officer? I can't remember it.
Boy, I don't remember the exact number. I'd hate to quote something inaccurate.
Okay. And next year's raise, what are they guaranteed next year?
Again, I'm trying to remember. I know that next year, I believe, it kicks in where they, if I recall correctly, they get the half step. They get their step increase, was it half below midpoint? Okay, 2.5, if they're below midpoint, as far as their step increase, if they're below the midpoint of their pay matrix, so the newer people will get a 2.5% step. The people in the top half of their pay scale would only get 1.25. The people who've been here longer, they'll compensate a little bit better. And then their cost of living increase, I believe, is based on the formula where it considers the city's sales tax as well as the CPI for our region.
And if I remember right, and don't quote me on this either, but it was somewhere between 2.5% and 5%, depending on where the sales tax came in?
Honestly, it depends on sales tax and CPI. So like, the cost of living raise this time, because of the sales tax, was at 3.25% in 2013. They would get half the CPI as of July 1. So July 1, they would get 0.7% increase.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll next go to Mayor Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's very important for the council to know the genesis of this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's very important for the council to understand the genesis of this. This started a few weeks ago in one of my very first meetings with our new chief, Carl Jaggers. And he suggested that we take a look at hiring bonuses or some strategy to try to alleviate the issue that we're having with competing with surrounding agencies, including DCI and Pennington County Sheriff. I suggested back to him that he can consider that, but also consider the concept of reopening or opening up the FOP contract on a very narrow basis to look at just this issue. And also, that it would have to be extensive consultation with the other departments, and also to ensure that the equilibrium, there wouldn't, yes, there's differences in the unions, but there are also similarities. And so to make sure that there was adequate communication. So he went back and mentioned it to FOP leadership. He was in the process of communicating this to other departments. And this wasn't ready for, to be included in the budget. But please know that it's coming from the administration. It's something we're very interested in addressing. And but tonight, we're just not ready to complete this negotiation, put the dot at the end of the sentence. There has to be, you know, Chief Jaggers is gone this week on vacation. He needs to be able to continue the conversation with the other departments. I'd received a call this afternoon from our fire chief asking me about this. So there's communications that have to occur. So I applaud the energy and enthusiasm, but we are showing the same energy and enthusiasm to address the issue, especially our new chief is, and I. So please give us an opportunity to work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll next go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I see we got the full support of the mayor. So my question is, and I think that's where I'm starting this conversation, I've been through this before. Been through the MOUs, the separate MOUs, been through all of it, the sales tax thing, all that stuff. And that's why I'm throwing it out. If this gives us an opportunity to set aside this funding, this budget for the mayor, and Jeff, and Chief Jaggers to open this communication, I have full confidence that, obviously, from the mayor's speech, that that's what they will do. So I'm not sure that it would not be appropriate to set aside this funding, to encumber the funding, and give the mayor the opportunity to step up with the FOP and figure out how to get it done. So I'm not sure what else to say. It's got, the conversation is going to start somewhere, and that's why I put it on with no other, you know, nobody else. I put it on here. I'm convicted to put it on here. I believe it's the right thing to do. I believe the mayor believes it's the right thing to do. If there's another process that needs to take place, I'm okay with that. But if we have the funding set aside, they know, and the police department has our full level of confidence that we're behind them. And we're going to make this happen. So I'm not sure how it happens or what the logistics are. That's not my job. Thanks.
Alderman Steve Lorente.
Thank you, Chair. And I initially agreed with Ron on this, and I still do 90%. My question really, I guess my concern at this point is, with the negotiations that have already been done, and where we're probably going to end up with sales tax next year, I have a feeling that the raises are probably going to put us probably pretty close, if not a little, maybe a little more competitive with the county. But I'll be honest, if it doesn't, I would definitely be more than willing to entertain it at a later time. But I think holding off at least for tonight would be good. Maybe officer negotiations with the mayor and the police department, it could come back with something else. But based on the negotiated contract and where it might end up next year, again, I believe, based on where we're at with sales tax, that the increases just might put us where we need to be in competitive. So but if not, I'm willing to definitely support what Ron wants to get done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, may I just make one more comment? Tamara Peer, who we brought in to help when we went through the interest-based bargaining process the first time with all the different unions. We've contacted her again. We plan on going, you know, talking to FOP, reopening negotiations, hopefully, like I say, very narrowly for just this one item. I don't even know specifics yet at this point. I mean, are we talking the entire FOP? Are there certain positions that need more, and some are that already paid more fairly? You know, we just haven't done that analysis yet. So there isn't, there isn't anybody in administration or management or, you know, police administration that doesn't think our police officers should be compensated fairly. Of course, we do, and we all appreciate what they do. But like I say, we've just contacted Tamara. We're going to start the process. It would be hard to throw out a number or what positions would get what or anything at this point. We're just, like I said, it's just in its infancy at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With that being said, what kind of complications does this cause if we set aside money in the budget? What's the difference, Jeff? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alderman Wyffenbach, that probably isn't a decision that should come from me. You know, that's totally up to you guys. But, you know, whether that's the right number or too much or not enough, or I-
Or I guess the other question, Mr. Chair, would be is, do we not put a number in there, and then we allow them to go through negotiations, and we come back with an appropriation? I mean, I'm game for that.
Yeah. If I could, you know, I, as a chair, I don't speak a whole heck of a lot, but I would like to share, and I think I've shared with you before, as far as I had the opportunity to sit on a board or an interview panel with the three officers that are sitting here tonight, and several others, to, we interviewed nine sergeants that were applying for the one lieutenant position. And the last question was, you know, you know, what are the problems that we have, we're going to have to overcome in the next five years, you know? And all of them, it was retention. It's that, it's that, and it's the fear that, you know, the guys that are on the streets making the decisions are all very young, you know, because we have high turnover there. I share your passion for wanting to stop this Alderman Wyffenbach, but I think putting a dollar amount out there at this point in time is premature.
Right. And that's the question I'm asking, Mr. Chair.
If you're asking my opinion, I think they're going to, I think-
I don't want to, I've been in this position before, where they came back and said to me, why didn't you bring that up with the budget? And I'm not going there this time. So if it's, if it makes sense to, as the mayor had said, that they're in that communication, I'm completely happy with that. And I trust and have full, he would have my full support, and I trust that he would make good decisions to get this handled. The retention thing, this is just a piece of the retention. I think we've made a lot of strives towards retention. One of them is, you know, there's another item on here. The other one is having, you know, full faith in the police department in itself, and having, you know, having a new chief in place that believes, like you said, that retention is an issue for us and quality. It always isn't a pay raise that makes people happy. It always isn't a pay raise that makes people happy. I completely understand that, so.
Well, I think, and I think we've had great discussion and, and we can do one of two things, Alderman Wyfembach. We've got a motion and a second on the floor, and I think we've all.
Would be okay with a second, or I would remove my motion and just scrap the item and, and allow the mayor to move forward with his negotiations.
I, I think that would be appropriate this, this time if it's okay with a second or.
If I may, I, I can support your recommendation to withhold that. But as soon as a number becomes available, I think that should be made available publicly so that both sides know what that number is going to be. And, and so the sooner that number is able to come forth, I, I'm very okay with delaying that decision. So we have a very good, solid number to work with. And as soon as that is available, I can support your motion or withdraw the motion. Thank you.
You yield the floor, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I took it that you yielded earlier. Sorry. Well, we, the motion, the motion maker and the second or took this off the floor. And if I have no other, no, no opposition, we're going to take a, a ten minute break and we'll meet back here at seven forty. Thank you. Seven, that's eighteen minutes. Eight, yeah. All right, we're going to go back in session here if we could. Next item on the list was an additional one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the police department fleet vehicles. And we'll go to Alderman Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. But I seen Pauline Q in there, and I think I could let her go first. That'd be, because I, I just had a couple of questions for her too about twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen budget and actuals for sales tax revenues and.
All right, perfect. Well, we'll, I'll, I'll yield to you and cue Pauline assumption. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to let you guys know that, that Chief Jaggers has brought this issue forward to me. We were actually looking at alternative funding sources, namely being the CIP fund to start funding some of this deficit, much like we do with the fire department. They have some of their fleet that comes out of the general fund and some of their fleet that comes out of the CIP fund. So I guess at this point, I would request that you let us continue to look at those alternative funding sources prior to just adding this to the general fund budget.
All right. Well, we're going to give the floor back to Alderman Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion to approve this. Hundred and twenty thousand. Thank you. No, to the general funding. I think that the CIP can't be done right now. This is go to the unencumbered cash or designated, undesignated cash, whatever. But first I had the question earlier.
Hold on just a second. We, we have a motion by Ron Wyfembach and a second by Darla. You retract it? Okay, you don't have to, to approve this hundred and twenty thousand dollar expenditure. Yeah.
Right.
She rescinded it. So we, until we get, anybody willing, the second. Okay, we have a second by Alderman Laurenti for discussion purposes. And Alderman Wyfembach, you have the floor.
I was, Mr. Chair, I was going to ask Pauline the question about twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen sales tax revenue actuals and where they were actually budgeted at and where we came in at for twenty thirteen and where we're at for twenty fourteen.
Okay, so remember.
Percentage was.
First of all, I just want to say, remember that when we budget, we're budgeting based on two years prior actuals. So for twenty thirteen, it was twenty eleven actual. And I don't remember the percentages that we, we budgeted for, but it was about twenty one point nine million dollars that we ended up budgeting for. But we've had good, good revenues. And so the actual was about twenty four million that was brought in in twenty thirteen. Now in twenty fourteen, it's based off twenty twelve actuals, and so we budgeted about twenty three million. And I will tell you that I just got the June numbers for sales tax today. And through June, we are up over five percent versus the same six months in twenty thirteen. I always say, don't get too excited about that because anything can happen in the last six months of the year. But that's where we were through June collections.
Right. And I, I thank you, and I, and I appreciate that. And I, I know there's been some discussion about having fleet come on a CPI. I know they're working on that. What this actually does, and my proposal does, is actually gets the fleet up to speed right now. There's, there's a, I asked Chief Jaggers, I have a hard time with his name, what would it take to get his fleet up to speed right now? When I was on the council before, we'd taken some actions that gave some of these cars a little bit more longevity. So there wasn't, there wasn't a need for the fleet budget expenses. And it was cut from three hundred thousand dollars to, I believe today, it's, it's, it's a lot less than maybe one twenty or, or something in that arena. And what has happened over the years is some of these cars have met their life expectancy. And several of them, I believe the numbers that I have here are somewhere. I think there's a total of. them, I believe the numbers that I have here are somewhere, I think there's a total of 16 of them, or is it, let me see. Maybe I'll ask Captain to come up and answer some of the questions. He put together a really informative spreadsheet about where their fleet is now with the cars that are over 100,000 miles, and some of the repairs that are being required by them. And actually, if you really sat down to these numbers, you get, almost get a wash out of the hundred and twenty thousand dollars to put the new cars on the street, cars that they can rely on, count on, and I have broken down, so maybe...
You have a question for Captain Hedrick?
If you could just kinda give us a brief overall description of where he's at with the fleet, how many of them are really like over 100,000 miles, what the maintenance is getting to be on some of these cars?
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. And I apologize for Chief Jaggers not being able to be here tonight, so unfortunately, you're stuck with me, but...
Well, Mr. Chair, I gotta say that earlier, this was completely came from me. I mean, I got in on this late. I got in on the whole process late, so I kinda...
That's fine.
Thank you.
Right now, I can kinda give you a basic breakdown of where we're at. Right now, we have seven vehicles with between 100,000 miles and 130,000 miles. And right now, we have two of them that have over 130,000 miles. And we kind of got to this point a couple different ways. Our fleet budget was cut in the past, and we tried to supplement that by refurbishing vehicles, taking older cars and taking out the seats, trying to put the engine back together in a more efficient manner. But what we've come to now is we're to a point where a lot of those refurbished vehicles are at their age, and some of the other cars that we're gonna need to be relying on are high mileage as well. Projecting out a year, if we don't adjust our fleet this year, we're gonna have eight vehicles that we're gonna be relying on for, with 130,000 miles on them on the street. We'll have eight more vehicles with between 100,000 and 129,000. And we talk about these mileage, this mileages, and the reason I bring this up is, a lot of different agencies immediately retire their vehicles at 100,000 miles. There's a safety aspect to it, and there's also a little bit of, you know, we had talked about the retention issue came up tonight. People wanna know, officers wanna know that when they jump in their car, it's gonna be reliable, it's gonna get them where they need to go, it's not gonna break down, and I think that all plays into the retention issue as well. There's more to retention than just wages. There's also the equipment aspect of that as well. You know, we've looked at some of the more high mileage vehicles just to get an idea of what they cost to keep running. If you take one of our 2009 Crown Vics, for example, with 130,000 miles on it, just this year alone, we spent almost $10,000 keeping it running. I think we're able to show that once you have a vehicle that reaches this 100,000 or 90,000 miles, you have an additional expenses that you have to use to keep it running. And I don't know, does that kinda give a little bit of a breakdown of...
Yeah, it does. It helps a lot. I just...
We've explored creative ways to try and supplement our budget. Over the last few years, we've, we've reached out to the Drug Seizure Fund from the state to help us purchase vehicles, based on the fact that they'll be affecting drug arrests. And we're gonna attempt to reach out to that again this year, as in like now. And we've also tried to reduce our overall fleet by, for example, cutting off some of the deadwood, some of the high mileage, unmarked vehicles that probably, that aren't in the emergency response mode. We've shipped some of those out and surplus them, so that we were able to focus more of our attention on the emergency response vehicles. We're doing what we can with what we have, but I think the fear is that we will be relying on older vehicles with high mileage through next year. And a little bit of concern with that.
I appreciate the comments, and if you could just stay there, and I'm not sure if some of my colleagues would have questions for you, but I brought this forward for, you know, there's, you know, many dimensions to why I brought this forward, but one of them was obviously the retention. It's important, I think, when people are in an environment that they have the tools that they need to do the job. Be very hard pressed to ask someone to build a house with a hands-on, a hammer. And understanding that some of the constraints that have been put on the fleet in the past, it's time to upgrade the fleet. And this basically brings it up to par, I think, to have that rotation working. Again, they've made great strides with using the mechanics to lengthen the period of time that the cars are operating on. So, I'm looking to my colleagues to understand. I know that the mayor, I've had conversations with him, he is working on making some changes to the CPI to allow for fleets purchases out of there. This would be actual budget line, budget item for $120,000. Today, earlier today, we had talked about the CPI, and one of the reasons I didn't take the CPI was there was plenty of tax revenues that were coming in. Hundred and twenty thousand dollars is not gonna make a big difference in our budget, but it is gonna make a big difference to the citizens in our community if the police department has a hard time reaching them. And I'm not just kidding. One, my ways at the council meeting, and I think I expressed this to you guys, on Mount Rushmore Road, there was a wrecker sitting there like, oh, you know, somebody had a fender bender or whatever, and I looked over, and it was one of our police cars getting put onto a tow truck, because it had broken down at the time. So, I would appreciate my colleague's support on adding this to the budget, so we can get these cars up to speed. Thank you. And I think that they'll hold for questions for you.
Next, you yielding? All right. Alderman Steve Lorente.
Thank you, Chair. If I could ask Finance a question since the...
Sure, go ahead.
Captain's busy. Pauline, can you, you started talking about negotiations or talking about using CIP funds for such a thing. Where's that at, or how far are we with that? I mean, I didn't, I'll be honest, I wasn't listening real close where you were at with that.
We're exploring the option of doing that, much like we do with the fire department. I got some information from another municipality that actually funds their entire police fleet, from what I can tell, out of their CIP fund. So, I wanna take a look at that. And honestly, that could be in place for the 2015 budget just as easily as this proposed addition to the general fund. It would take a little bit of an ordinance change to allow for that to be included, but quite honestly, there's money in undesignated cash there that I would rather use for this purpose than to come from the general fund. But that's something that we want to explore. It should go through the CIP committee and then come forward to the council as their recommendation.
So, what would be your guesstimate if we could actually, how long would it take? You're saying we could get it before second reading of the budget?
No, probably not, because the agenda is already, I think, already set for Friday. Yeah, because it's in two days for CIP, but it could go to the September CIP meeting.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
Yeah.
Captain, if, how long would it take for you, how long will it take? And maybe you can't say, but how long would it take to put, if you were to get seven next week, how long would it take to get them ready and put in service?
Well, typically, there is a time lag from ordering the vehicle to actually getting here. We're talking about probably two to three months. On top of that, a few weeks at least to get the lights put on, the cages put together. And you're talking about a couple of weeks for each vehicle, if that kind of answers your question.
It does.
Yeah.
It does. And I support it. I mean, obviously, it's a couple, three months. Maybe we'll have a choice of where we wanna fund it, whether it be CIP or take it out of undesignated cash. So, but I do support it. So, I just wanted to find out how long it would take, and would it run right into a finished negotiation and an ordinance change in CIP? However, I'm a little concerned about diverting CIP, especially if, you know, if we can use it for streets or something like that. But I do support it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll next go to Mayor Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I rise in support of Alderman Wyfemuck's motion, and here's why. Had we had the benefit of a crystal ball in March or April, when Chief Allender and Carl Jaggers and I sat in my office with Pauline who went over the budget, we probably would have done more than what we did in terms of increasing the fleet amount from 120 to 180,000. Since that time, we had been exploring the idea of also looking at the capital improvements plan, as was mentioned earlier, because Sioux Falls and other cities consider their fleets as a capital improvement item. Of course, you know, if you do that, that leaves less money for streets, which is also a priority. And as I heard, I haven't heard the final amount of the bid, but I understand that the bids from Mount Rushmore Road came even higher than before. So, I support, I support Ron's motion for a couple of reasons. One is, is that sales tax is coming in even better than we thought it would. Number two, I would much rather we spend this money from undesignated cash right now than to spend it from capital improvements, knowing that probably every dime that we have in capital improvements contingency will need to be spent over the next few years, just to be able to keep the current projects that we have in the hopper going. I don't see the room, although there is a will, I don't, at this point, see a way to add a huge expense to capital improvements without moving, moving something, something else. And with that being said, we're still going to look at changing the ordinance, so that we can have that flexibility from a leadership standpoint down the road. But there's a couple of other things in the hopper relating to the capital improvements ordinance that will cause a delay in that. Number one is the membership of the committee. That's something that's being worked out and discussed with council leadership, who's on the capital improvements committee, and how those recommendations come forward. Number two is capital improvements and the Vision Fund are part of the same ordinance, and that's currently under discussion right now as to, as to how to do the bonding for the Civic Center and two fire stations, which involves both, both funds. And there would need, there needs to be a rather large ordinance rewrite anyway. So, it isn't just a simple surgical change to go into the capital improvements ordinance and change it. So, I appreciate Ron bringing this forward. I support it. Let's do it. Thank you.
Excuse me, I fell asleep. Alderwoman Charity Doyle.
I don't know how you could fall asleep with that. This is exciting stuff. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a few questions for Captain Hedrick, if I may. Thank you. How many cars do we need to have replaced in order to have a reliable fleet right now?
That's, that is a good question. And for, we've identified 13 cars that are, need to go in some way in the very near future that need to be replaced. You know, with the current or previous budget that we had of 120,000, that would allow us to replace three vehicles. I know it sounds like there's been a, an ask to change in, in our budget for next year to bring that to 180, and that would allow us to replace a few more. Adding, adding 120 on top of that as well, we'd be able to replace nearly eight vehicles. And that's, we're talking the vehicle itself and the equipment that would be needed to bring that up to speed. So, if we did, if we did bring it up to the $300,000 level, we'd be able to replace immediately eight out of the 13 that need to go.
That was my next question, is 120,000 the right number? And I'm hearing that that is not the right number. And this is, and then, and I, just for a second, the 13 that you're speaking of are the, they're a liability, not an asset. These are the dire need vehicles, not the ones that can be placed in service, or kept in service for another two to three years.
All 13 of these vehicles have either 100,000 miles on them or more, or nearly 100,000 miles on them.
Okay.
You know, just because a vehicle has 100,000 miles on it, doesn't mean it's gonna fall apart tomorrow. But as we've seen, the odds of it, the odds of it going out increase greatly once you get to that higher mileage. I mean, these cars live a rough life. They are, they don't sit around. One guy will get out of a car, he'll pull it into the Sallyport, and the next guy will jump right into it and head to the shift. And after his shift, that car gets jumped into by the, by the night shift guy, and so on, and so on, and so on. And they're out in all the elements, year in and year out. So, 100,000 miles on a regular car, there's a difference between that and a police car, because they are, we get the most we can out of them.
Which brings me to the next question. How long, how many years typically does one of these units last?
It kinda depends on what it is. Three or four years, I think, would be a very honorable life. I think once you're beyond that, you're really pushing it. It's, you're riding around in a vehicle that's in rough shape.
So, to replace all 13, we're looking at how much?
Well, if you figure roughly, if you figure roughly want, to replace one vehicle, you're looking at $38,000 roughly. And that's with the equipment, that's the vehicle itself and the equipment. So, I guess whatever that would be times 13. I wasn't a math major, so...
Four hundred?
Wow. $494,000.
I think, I think the 300,000 would get us closer to where we need to be, because we can start, we can also be relying on other funding sources. And we already have a letter into the state to try and help us replace a handful of our vehicles through the Drug Seizure Fund. That's not approved right now, but there's a chance they might, that might go through for a couple, a couple vehicles at least. And, you know, to get us by, we can always try and keep up with our refurbishing process, but at some point, you can only refurbish a car so far.
Well, we have the 120 that the mayor's in full support of at this point. I'd be willing, of course, I'm only one of 10, but I'd be willing to throw council contingency into the pot, since we very rarely dip into it. And if we do have a true emergency, I would surmise that we would have some undesignated cash in the course of the year that we could use. And I'm looking for any other ideas on getting this up to where it needs to be. I yield. Oh, wait, wait, wait. I have to say, I have to say, I have a lot of friends that are police officers. In the last week, I've heard of two of our fleet that have caught on fire, one irreparably, one has it started and they couldn't figure out where the fire was coming from. And three of them that I know of, and I don't know the whole fleet, obviously, but three of them that I know of, that you can't start without jumping. I mean, it needs extra help. So, think about it, emergency situation, or a car breaks down, there's no replacement. So, these, these guys are off the street. So, I think, you know, we're hitting the obviously highest alarm with this, and I'm grateful that the council and mayor are looking at what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll next go to Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe Pauline had buzzed in because she had calculated that number. Can we take her for, and then I'll follow up?
Happy to. Finance Officer Pauline Sumption.
Thank you. That's not why I buzzed in. Charity's number's right, same as mine, is the 494,000. I can commend you guys for wanting to make sure that public safety is taken care of. But when I ask the chief the question, how much money do you need additional in your budget to get back to your fleet maintenance program? He tells me 120,000. You kill me when you want to give him 300,000 instead. If we go to 494,000, there's 180,000 in the budget already. That's an additional $300,000. He told me 120. That's all I'm saying.
All right. Thank you, Pauline. Well, Amanda, you're still on, still on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion, because what Alderwoman Doyle did resonate with me, and I would like to make a motion that we move the 100,000 from council contingency to this line item for the fleet.
We have a motion as, excuse me, we already, are you gonna make a substitute motion? Would that make, would you do that in the form of a substitute motion to add, to do 220? two twenty, the hundred twenty plus the hundred? Or?
No, because I'm not really sure I'm ready on board with the hundred and twenty out of undesigned cash yet, I'd still like to hear.
All right, we have a motion, we have a motion by Amanda Roberts, and a second by, oh, excuse me. Yeah. Alderwoman Scott, we have a motion by Alderwoman Scott, and a second by Alderwoman Doyle, to take the hundred thousand out of council contingency and put it in the police fleet budget.
Point of clarification?
Go ahead.
What I believed I was seconding was, in addition to the motion on the floor as an amendment, I'm wanting clarification from the motion maker to, I think, I think we're not thinking on the same page here.
Right, and if there's already a motion on the floor, I'll withdraw mine at this point, and listen to the rest of the conversation.
The motion we have on the floor is the original motion from Alderman Wiefenbach to put a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of undesigned cash into the police department's fleet, and it was a second by Alderman Lorente for discussion purposes, and that's where we're at right now.
And I'll withdraw my motion until we clear that one at this point. Thank you.
All right. Alder, well, we, Charity, you're still in the queue? Do you want the floor, or are you going to?
Well, I guess a procedural question first, can an amount be amended? If the motion maker would like to amend the amount and add in, throw in the council contingency pot, that's doable?
What, why don't somebody just?
For a cleaner proceeding?
I'm ready to vote on what we have right now, at the one twenty.
The one twenty?
Without the extra hundred?
No, just whatever I made the motion with, right now, I'm ready to vote on that, I think I'll keep it at that for this point, and then we can go from there, so.
Okay, so, so we can discharge this amount, and we can have other motions on the same item, is that what I'm hearing?
We can either vote on this, and we have a motion, we have a motion to put the hundred twenty in. Now, if you want to make a substitute motion to add the hundred thousand to the one twenty, you're able to do that. What Alderwoman Scott had done was made a substitute motion, which she subsequently withdrew, because she was only going to put the council contingency towards it, and you thought it was, so she, he's saying one twenty, she said a hundred, you thought, she said, well, then make the motion. Make the motion, or we're going to vote. While you're thinking, I'm going to go to Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, let's call the question.
All right, call the question, the question is, the mo, undesigned cash, we have a motion by Wiefenbach, second by Lorente, to put subs, take a hundred and twenty thousand on the undesigned cash for the PD fleet vehicle, and our council contingency would stay intact. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
We have one dissent. Now, I, if, if, if we're going to move on unless somebody wants, Mayor.
I want to show you something which might help this. This is the council contingency history, and this is also linked to your agenda. Up here you have, oops, what am I doing here? Never mind, I'll just, I won't try to draw on it, but what I'll say is, is that, look at 2014, you have a hundred and fifty thousand available in council contingency for 2014. I would ask you not, I applaud where Amanda Scott's going, but I would ask that rather than you take the entire amount for 2015, that you consider taking some of each, because our finance, I've tried to do this before, Amanda, and Pauline has always, or I've looked at doing this before, and Pauline said, you shouldn't just rely on encumbered cash, because it makes it easier if you have, if you have a lawsuit or something that you need to settle, it's a lot easier to do that, rather than go through the whole supplemental appropriation process. So, my recommendation to you is for you to take part of 2014, and you can go ahead and order, you know, put the order in now if you want, and then take part of, part of 2015, rather than zero out 2015, and have an entire hundred and fifty thousand dollars potentially unused for 2014. Just some thought.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I got a question. Detective Johns, Captain Johns, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, I know we're all one police department, but as you hear talk about the cruisers that have a hundred to a hundred and thirty thousand miles on them, what cars do the detectives use?
Our detectives use, basically, unmarked cars that we purchase through federal surplus. We have the option of buying cars through the federal surplus system, sometimes we get the opportunity to buy some really nice used vehicles. What we did was, we kind of peeled back the CID fleet, the Criminal Investigation Division fleet, we used to have cars available to each individual detective, so that if something came up, that detective could jump out and go deal with whatever they had to address at that moment. Working with the fleet, we cut our CID fleet to, basically, double up our detectives on each car, so the, a number of our detectives share one vehicle, so they have to kind of coordinate with each other a little bit on what they're going to go out and do, and when they're going to do it, or if somebody's using a car, they have to beg a car off of somebody else, so it, it's tricky. That too is part of the retention, I mean, it goes into that entire discussion. And if I may, make a point, in talking with Chief Jaggers, the hundred and twenty thousand dollars that he told our finance officer that would be appropriate now, which you guys have done, was to get us going, with the understanding that we would be looking at the capital improvement program for funding to get through 2015, to do continual work with this. Sioux Falls has a fantastic program, I know their fleet, we've visited it with them in the past, and they use that fund for that. So, I just want to be clear that Chief Jaggers did tell Pauline a hundred and twenty thousand right now, with the understanding that we'd be looking at the CIP in the future.
Thank you, I just, I wanted to bring you up to the podium, because I do recall, when I was invited to that interview process, there were actually detective sergeants that voiced frustration, I mean, they're working a case, and there's not a car for them to go drive to talk to somebody about it, they have to sit there and wait for a car to show up so that they can go. I just thought that was, so, so in this, in this food chain, well, I guess I don't know how the cars get, are these all street vehicles, or does any of this money go to your department?
Well, what we like to do is, is we need to understand that patrol is the backbone of our department. The nine-one-one call drives our entire mission. If our officers aren't able to respond to that nine-one-one call, there's no reason to have detectives, there's no reason to have detective cars. So, our goal has always been to make sure that that patrol fleet can sustain and answer those calls. When we have extra funds, that's when we start looking at reaching out to the folks at federal surplus and seeing what they have available, and that might be, you know, we've driven Dodge Stratasys in the past, you know, if there's a nice looking Crown Vic with low miles, we'll grab that when we can, but the driving force in our fleet are those patrol vehicles that need to be purchased.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. So, so as I look at this line item tonight, we've voted and we have affirmed the additional hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the fleet. Now, as the mayor's talked, and there's been discussion about maybe reallocating some of our council contingency for 2015 to it, but I believe the mayor's recommending that maybe we consider looking at our 2014 council contingency and seeing how much we have not used, and maybe at a, at a future council meeting, if we feel appropriate to, we could do, we could put additional funds there. I have Richie Nordstrom and Charity Doyle on the queue, Richie, I'll go to you, and then Charity, but pretty quick, we're going to go on to the next slide item. Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and if I may ask the finance officer a couple of questions, right now, the direction that we're headed, can you give me kind of a, I'll call it a rolling number, I don't know if that's the correct number, Wade has stated, but a rolling number of where we're at for our undesigned cash, where are we at? And I know it's hard to keep up with everything that's going on, but.
I got, I got the total, with not taking CPI, because you guys have not voted to take it yet, you're at two point five million of using undesigned cash.
Without the CPI, thank you.
Just slightly over two point five.
Okay.
That's balancing the budget, not taking CPI.
And then with the current, excuse me, just the previous motion that was made, is that would, this, that this would reduce the two point five by a hundred and twenty thousand?
That includes the hundred and twenty thousand that you guys just approved to add to the police department budget.
Oh, that, all right, so that was, we're still working with two point five?
That you've used.
That we used.
Out of the estimated three point six.
So, we've got roughly, what is it, point nine left to go?
One point one, I don't know, that's left to go.
Maybe that's an inappropriate way to say that, but that's what we got to work with. I am, point of order, Mr. Chair, there's some, there's some conversation going off to my right here, and I have to object to that conversation. I'm just trying to understand what we're trying to get to at this point, where, and if I'm using the wrong terms, my apologies, and, but essentially, I'm trying to figure out what we get to work with yet here.
In my opinion, you guys should be cutting, not adding, based on the information I provided earlier, where my recommendation is to only use about two million dollars out of undesigned cash. So, you either need to find additional revenue sources, or make some cuts, to get to that two million dollars versus a two point five million, or versus continuing to grow how much you're going to use of that three point six million.
Thank you, I'm trying to get a handle on which direction I should be going next, and so I appreciate the clarification on this. The, if I can address the police department in general, I appreciate the numbers that you're bringing forward on it, and if we bring this over to the CIP, we've got, even with the addition or infusion of the additional sales tax, that'll help us out, but we've got several street department projects that have been in wait for roughly five years, and now they're just getting moved up to the current process now, so that we're looking at, perhaps some needed project would be in, have to look at moving that back another year. So, that's the balance that I'm trying to work out through this. So, if you go through the CIP, just understand, that's the balance I'm trying to figure out, and I appreciate that. Because I don't want to lose the projects that are needed in the street repair, because your vehicles got to travel over those streets. And I want to applaud the people that are doing the maintenance on your vehicles, because they do not get recognized enough for the outstanding work they're doing to your vehicles, and how they're accomplishing that. And I'm just, as I'm going on here, I'm just trying to figure out how best to utilize this undesigned cash, and if we're going over that, it addresses some new challenges for me, so I appreciate your patience, thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to Charity Doyle, Alderman Nordstrom, the way I'm keeping track of it, prior to this last motion, we were, we'd spent twenty-one thousand seven hundred dollars of additional money, plus, then you add the one twenty, so tonight, we've added a hundred and forty-one thousand seven hundred dollars to the budget, and then if you, if you think that you're not going to take the CPI, you add that two hundred and one, so there's, we have, there's about a three hundred and forty thousand dollar swing of, basically, we're spending more, the budget's out of kilter by three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. And, that's my math. Okay, all right, we're going to go to Alderwoman Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could I have Captain Hedrick approach the podium again, please? Thank you, Captain Hedrick, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but the maintenance on these eight vehicles we need to replace costs us what every year, or what's it cost us in the last several years that we neglected to replace them?
Well, these thirteen vehicles that we've identified as high mileage and high cost, I can tell you, one year of maintenance on all of these vehicles adds up to seventy-three thousand dollars, and actually above that, that's the maintenance cost to keep all thirteen of these high mileage vehicles on the street, running. So, you can see, there is additional expense on top of that. The newer vehicles do not have this high expense, if that makes sense.
It does, so for what you would be saving, if we can get you started, you could get a couple additional vehicles with that maintenance savings cost.
Correct.
Or another idea is, if we're going to, you know, perhaps entertain taking some council contingency to really give you guys a boost now, plus what we've already appropriated for, or considering appropriating for 2015, there may, we may benefit from some kind of reversion discussion too, on what you're saving versus rolling that back to undesigned cash, if that's doable. But I did want to ask a procedural question of the mayor, if I may. I see he's in a conversation.
Mayor Quigley?
I just want to ask you a procedural question, if I may. I like your idea of utilizing some of council contingency from this year to get them rolling. Procedurally, would that discussion best be had right now, or do we need to place that on a future, like, legal and finance or public works agenda?
It could either go on the next legal and finance agenda, or if I know that I have your support on it, we could put it under, could publish it under mayor's items for, or council items for Monday nights, council meeting, I mean, I don't think two weeks makes much of a difference, we could probably just run it through the normal channels. If you'd like, we'll add it to legal and finance.
Well, I've already spoken, but how much of that hundred and fifty thousand are you comfortable with relinquishing for this year to get them started?
Well, I would say at least a hundred.
Okay, if somebody would like to make that motion, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm going to make that motion here, if it counts.
Pauline, if you just want to add this under?
No, to put on, oh, you can just add it.
Yeah, if you just want to add this under police department items, for the next legal and finance agenda, we'll just do that.
Okay, and we don't need it.
And no motions necessary.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I'm, seeing no other lights, I'm going to consider the police department fleet issue taken care of. Next item, just as an item of information, Richie, you'd asked for some, you know, time's getting short, we got some actual decisions. Now, this was information, now I don't know that it would result in the, in the form of any type of a motion, but the Parks Direct budget history that was requested by Alderman Nordstrom, are you, did that give you the information you wanted, Richie? Sorry.
Yeah, I apologize, let me apologize to Jeff Bigler, because I asked him to stick around, just in case this item was able to come forward, as though, if the sentiment of the rest of the council is to defer this, I'm okay with that, but let me. of the rest of the council is to defer this, I'm okay with that, but let me extend an apology for having Jeff do some extra overtime for me, so thank you. If it's all right with the rest of the council, then I'll yield to their consideration to defer this item.
Well, did you, did you have some specific budget supplement items you wanted to deal with tonight regarding, I mean, I'm not trying to shorten you, I didn't know if this was information or if, or if this was going to result in you wanting to change the budget.
Let me say that there's some exasperation on my part because of the, the direction we've gone earlier in this evening and not fully understanding, and that's my fault, of where this money was coming from and understanding what we had to start with as far as the undesignated cash, not realizing how that process was working, and that's my fault. So, if I would have known that process was going to be taking place the way it's going, there probably would have been some other decisions made on my part. So, with that in mind, it is, with some reluctance to defer this, but I think we better defer this, because if this adds into some more requests from undesignated cash, and I can, I know the Parks Department can, can work with, around what we're doing with the process we're doing currently, I beg forgiveness from the Parks Department for, hoping that we could go for, forward with some changes to the tennis courts. So, thank you, I yield the floor.
Thank you, Alderman Nordstrom, now, so would I, would we be crossing off Parks and Rec and Tennis Courts at this time? All right, thank you, thank you. I guess the next thing I'd like to go then is Steve Laurenti's questions, and everybody had a, and I don't know, Steve, do you want, do you want to go down these light items and talk about cuts, was that your hope, or what would you like to do with this?
Thank you, Chair. Really, no, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, it would be easier to talk about the nonprofits first, I don't think that would be as lengthy as a discussion as the questions, so, sorry.
All right, the nonprofits, I'm not sure who, who had asked to have the nonprofits?
That's me.
Okay.
As you noticed the other night, I was, I was asking all the nonprofits if they had a grant writer, and it seems to, since I've been on that side of the dais, and as I used to call it our yearly flogging, when we'd come and ask for money from the city council, it never felt good. There seems to be some groups that really aren't progressing like they should with their fundraising, and I would like to know, I, I don't know who I'd ask this to, and it probably isn't something we can handle tonight, but I'd like to see if the city had resources in the form of grant writers. There's programs in the for-profit world where there'll be executives on loan, so to speak, and I think if, if some of these groups, Journey and, and others, had someone they could go to for some real expertise on grant writing, that maybe they'd be more successful in, in their grant writing efforts, and then they might not have to be in front of us every year asking for increases or money that they just didn't make up over the year. So, that's all I wanted to do, is bring up that fact that I think there's, might, there might be resources here that is not in the form of cash, that would help these guys get on their, on their feet. We build these beautiful buildings and put citizens in charge of them, and sometimes they really don't know how to run a building and, or have facilities management, and those are big problems for them. And so, not only help them with some grant writing, but maybe also some budgeting expertise, and I think if we reached out to them, they're not going to ask us for that, they're not going to come here and say, "Oh, we need your help budgeting," that would just be counterintuitive. But if we made that available to them some way, and say, "Look, we have these resources that would help you to be a more successful entity and to maybe get you to operate in the black," because right now, as you enable people, you know, they just need more enabling, and I think that we just, we need to not slam them down, but lift them up with some help from the city. And that's all I have to say about it right now, and so I'm just putting that out there, and maybe you guys could tell me where I should go with this next, and hopefully it's not out the door, but I would like to just be able to, to work with somebody in the city and find out how we can help these nonprofits to feel a success.
Thank you, Alderman Drew. One of the questions I had is, would it, does, they all kind of have a different niche in their arts, and what I, what I didn't know is if, if the city could have a grant writing office and they just bill their time to the, to the various nonprofits and to our, our departments to, to have a, have a on-staff professionally grant writing team, but I, but, but somebody had testified the other night that when, when they used somebody else, it didn't, it didn't work, so it seemed...
It's got to come from the hearts of the people that are working in that nonprofit, they have to feel it strongly to make something be successful. What I'm thinking of is when they get to the point where they're going through a grant request that's three inches high in a binder, that they might need some extra help, you know, from, from this group. I know we have grant writers that work here, Richie told, Richie Nordstrom told me they're all very busy, but I think that this could, in the long run, save us some money. Now, if you're going to go ahead and then just rebuild the nonprofits, they probably won't take advantage of it, that's what I'm thinking. But they need, they need some help from the city, and I don't think it's always money.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair, and I guess on that note, Alderman Drew, the one thing that I kind of heard just left out of my ear as well, but maybe one of the things that, maybe one of the things that a discussion could be with these nonprofits is maybe pooling resources to be able to have a, maybe a centralized team of very professional grant writers, maybe overall less of them, but more dedicated, as we heard, some of them are, you know, dual-headed, they're doing a lot of different things, so they're pulled in multiple different ways, but maybe nonprofits might be, in Rapid City, might be able to pool resources to have a grant writing team that works for all of the nonprofits, and they could afford to, to employ some professional grant writers that could increase their odds of being successful in that area, but that was just one idea.
I, I see that as a possibility, maybe if they would pool their resources to hire somebody that would be at least a half-time employee to, to go ahead and help with those grants, but it'd have to be somebody pretty sharp. But there's, I was talking to the library earlier, there's a lot of low-hanging fruit out there, the 3,000, the $5,000 grants that I don't think they really go after, and I would like to see more of that. Now, when Mayor Hanks was, Mayor, he got a group of nonprofits together to discuss this very thing, and then it just didn't go any farther. You know, he brought in people that were really professionals at, at fundraising like myself, and also, I'm, one of the things that, that I did at the DALLA was put in systems of being able to advertise for free, you know, because we didn't have any money, so, and you still have to advertise, but there's, there's certainly resources out there. So, I don't know if it's some kind of a committee or some kind of task force, I hate to say those words, but, you know, it might be just a temporary task force that, that gets together and tries to, to solve some of these problems without necessarily marching them in front of us every year to, to ask for an extra $15,000, because we just can't figure out how to get it, you know.
Thank you, we'll go to Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Alderman Drew is, just since you brought up the Journey Museum, I'd like to take the opportunity to present to the council that the Journey Museum is hiring a development officer, so their primary function will be for grant writing. And with this new person coming on board, I don't anticipate much training for them to be up to speed to, to do that, but the goal for that person or that officer to do that position would be to, at very minimum, and Troy Kilpatrick, who's the executive director, has issued the challenge to that development officer, they've got to make, forgive me, I think, I don't put this in concrete, but I believe it's about three times their wage, what they'd be doing on that grant writing. So, that, that is perhaps something that our nonprofits can pursue some kind of direction as, as what the Journey Museum is doing.
As a person that was in that position myself, that does take several years to make it to that, that particular point where you're doing three times what you get paid. So, I hope that they give him, him or her enough time to learn how to do that, and also, of course, don't, don't forget about your local resources as far as like sponsorships and memberships, because those could be really beneficial and build the support as well. And one last thing I'd like to say about the Journey, I did send Troy a marketing plan on how to be able to get the advertising and marketing done guerrilla style, or with, you know, free or low-cost marketing, so trying to help where I can, but I'd just like to see if the city could come up with some help for the, the nonprofits in the form of grant writers.
Thank you, and just an FYI on that point, is that we can come up with the current grant writers to help them with data from the city, so they can get some data, but they actually physically writing the, the grants, they're, they just don't have enough time, so, thank you.
Okay, well, I'm just throwing it out there as a possibility and as a way to look at those, um, groups in the future and help them to succeed.
Thanks, both of you. All right, the, the big, the big item we have coming up next is a CPI discussion, but before we go to that, when, when, when the budget hearings first started, one of the items that Alderman Laurenti had asked is, is for the, from the department heads is, you know, top three areas you'd look at if, if, if you had to cut, if we come in and said, "You need to cut your budget," and then, and then the second question is, "How are you able to incorporate the comp plan into your 2015 budget?" Finance Officer Pauline Sumption emailed, I believe, this spreadsheet to, to everyone, and you were all able to reach it, read it. I've just, I'm, I assume this, this is what Alderman Laurenti had asked for, it's good information, I just opened it up, if there, if you want any discussion, if not, we're going to go right, right to the last item, and that would be the CPI. Alderman Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair, well, it would be a crime if I didn't speak about an item that I'd requested.
It would be.
Thank you for that, and there are police here still, I think, so, but the reason I asked for it was twofold, really. First, because we've had these meetings that we had over at the Civic Center, I think most of the previous council was there for those about the comprehensive plan, so, and I'm very excited about it, and I think a lot of the city departments are, I'm hoping, and I think, I think I see that, I think they are. You know, the mayor, I think, initially started this direction when he went with, you know, performance-based budgeting. It's difficult, of course, because it's a new change, but it's helped, I think, be a seed for the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is obviously a much more wider in breadth and takes in everything that we're going to do, and that is why I asked for it, this, you know, just to start looking at it for 2015, because in 2016 is when we're really going to start diving into the comprehensive plan and that the budget reflects that comprehensive plan, so I wanted to do it for that reason, for one thing, and to raise awareness for the department directors, which I'm sure, you know, they're, they're more, much more in tune with the comprehensive plan than probably all of us, because they know that's going to be a major part of the budget for 2016. But I wanted to raise that awareness for us, so that we're thinking about that as well, so that we're, when we're looking at the budget, we're not down in the weeds, that we're looking at the budget more holistically, much like the departments will need to do, because they're going to have to, I think some of the directors will have to shed some silo mentality, because I've worked in, you know, management long enough, I know my department's most important to me. But the reality is, you know, the council, the directors, the, all of the staff that work for the city, we're one big family, and that's, in my opinion, that's what this comprehensive plan is all about. And so, I wanted to try to bring, inject some of that for 2015, knowing we're going to be really diving in deeper in 2016. The second part of that, of me requesting this, was of course, related to what we're about to discuss, which is the CPI, because again, it's about all of us coming together as a family, the directors, the council, the mayor, and making priorities, much like every family out there listening, or every family that is, you know, that are citizens of this city, they expect us to make priorities with the budget, and that's what the comprehensive plan is all about, making priorities, and that's part of the comprehensive plan in providing those things that the directors had hoped they were going to get in their budget in 2016, and maybe some of the things that they could do without and still complete their mission. And so, with that, now segueing into the CPI, which you're about to go to, those areas that the, the directors, I'm assuming, could still complete their mission without great sacrifice, is where these areas of cuts are, but I think we already realized that the CPI is probably not needed, because we still have, well, the finance officer would love to have, I know more in the undesignated cash, and I sympathize with that, and, but there is some room there, even, as she has said, not counting the CPI, and so I will just leave it at that, and we'll segue to the next item, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Alderman Laurenti. Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, I agree that we can segue into the CPI, as of today, that was on the legal and finance committee, and there is a recommendation that is coming to the council on Monday night, I, I feel no need to discuss that, I think that it, because it is going to be on the agenda Monday night, that if we discuss it tonight, there may be some people that, because this wasn't published, so there may be some people that, you know, went to today's meeting, expected to be on Monday's meeting, so, thank you.
That's fine, so if there's no, yeah, it still has to go through the resolution, so I, I guess if anybody wants to discuss it, the CPI is the last item on the, you know, we've had two gentlemen speak in regard to it, it does have to go to council, the resolution, Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just to pick up on where we were at when we moved this item on our, on our list, and the question was, over the last several years that we haven't taken it, how much, Pauline, would we have accumulated had we, had we taken it as an overall philosophy of building that in every year?
If we had taken all of the, the CPIs that we could have, which would have been 2008 for the 10 budget, 2011 for the 13 budget, and 2012 for the 14 budget, that would be an additional almost 2.7 million dollars today in our budget, not including, not including anything for the 2015 budget, because that would be an additional 1.2 million on top of that for almost 3.9 cumulative, because in 2010, we would have had the 315,000 in 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, I'm accumulating it all throughout the years. So, it would have been close to 3.9 million through 15 with the CPIs, not including any growth on top of, you know, compounding factor.
Wow, that's a lot more than I expected, thank you for looking that up. I yield.
Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you very much, can I ask a question of Pauline something?
Sure, you can.
Pauline, with, with the utility drainage fund coming in the way it is right now, how much will that create over the next five years?
11.5 million over five years with this revenue source.
So, almost three times the amount that we lost on the CPI?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
For different projects, though.
All right, I see no further, Mayor, did you have anything? Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I did see the mayor standing up to the podium, and I did want to go back to the beginning of our conversation, Mayor, and I believe you said, and I'm just looking for clarification, the way you phrased it, I just want to try to make sure I understand, the way you phrased it was that past councils, before the council has to pass a specific resolution indicating that they are going to incorporate the CPI, Consumer Price Index, into a budget, were denied the opportunity to take the CPI. Could you, denying it, can you explain that?
Sure.
Sure. It was actually codified in 2012 with Resolution 2012-004 that said, prior to taking a CPI in an annual appropriations budget, it had, it had to be amended into the budget by the city council by virtue of a resolution. A resolution that would have to be published, a resolution that could be referred to a public vote. And an action which really became, instead of an administrative action, became a legislative action. And a legislative action is referable to a public vote. Typically, administrative actions are not. Prior to, I think, 2008 budget, the, the CPIs were automatically included in the budget. They were never discussed separately. They, they, they could theoretically have been amended out, but there wasn't an upfront discussion about whether or not to take the CPI like what we're having now. So transparency has been improved considerably. In 2007, or the 2008 budget, it, it began to be separated out at that point. And then 2012, I brought forward a resolution which passed unanimously to codify the separation.
So city councils weren't denied the opportunity? Were they? That, that was your statement earlier, is that they were denied the opportunity?
Yeah, there was, there was not a, Amanda, there was not a, there was not a separate discussion on the, on the, on the CPI. And you had to know, you had to, you know, this is a philosophical discussion. I mean, I, I believe that the, having a separate debate on the CPI and making sure that citizens and council members can debate the CPI upfront, rather than if someone wants to go in surgically and have that discussion and try to find, try to find six votes to remove it if they think it's improper. Rather, it should be six votes to add it in if it's considered proper. So what we have done is we have changed the burdens, the burden of proof. So now that it's easier to have more transparency on the CPI.
Okay. I, I still, I think we're on two different pages, but I won't even go down that road anymore. So then, when you incorporated the CPI in the 2015 budget, in your proposed budget, there's no way for you to own this.
I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, you can incorporate it into your budget, just like you did the city council's wages increase and the mayor's increase. But until it actually goes through a resolution from the council, it really is just theoretical.
Well, there's, you know, I stood in front of this council in 2012 and, and, or 2011 and asked to take the 2012 CPI. And I, and I also brought forward the resolution recommending that you, you take the CPI for next year. As I said earlier, we all have access to information now that we didn't have access to earlier this year. Point number one is, is you have the ability to have additional information ranging from building permits and what's happening in the city at large. We have the additional sales tax, the numbers that just came in today, which we didn't have access to in, in, in March. And we also have the, the growing concern over the, the stormwater utility. And by not taking the CPI for next year, you know, if you guys choose not to take the CPI for, for next year, I'm perfectly okay with that because it helps reduce the sting from the new stormwater utility. Now, in thinking out loud here, you know, one idea might be, and Pauline might have a concern with this, so there'll be a couple of weeks for this to percolate. But one idea might be is for you to take the CPI for 2015, to pass the resolution on Monday night, put the additional $180,000 or whatever it is so that you can get to the full 494 for, for police. And then you've taken it ongoing. So you, you address the ongoing issue for funding fire department and other issues in, in 2016. But by doing, by, by, if you look at, at this up here, you have 16, if you look at the 2013 and 2014 CPIs of $16, times two years in a row, that's 32 per $100,000. Plus this, which is an ongoing savings for the taxpayers. We are, we have provided some tax relief to our citizens while still meeting our, our needs as city government. I believe, Amanda, I know we have, may have some disagreements on this, but I, I believe overall that this budget process is more accountable, more transparent. We're having a, a much better discussion than we've ever had in the past because instead of getting stuck in the weeds on, on various line items, we're able to have a global discussion like what you've had all night tonight. I think it's been a great conversation.
Well, I agree with you on that statement, Mayor. I, I'm just having a hard time trying to understand your logic this year in taking the CPI. I'm just going back to what you had said in the past two years in which the sales tax was there, the growth in property tax was there, and that there was really no need. And, and without tying your recommendation of taking the CPI, and I've, you and I've already had this conversation offline, I'm at odds trying to understand why you would have put this in your budget in the first place. So I'm still just trying to understand.
Let me, let me take a crack at it. Is, is that when I sat down, and I think Pauline will attest to this, I, I questioned whether we should take any of the CPIs. And I was met with a delegation of department heads who came to my office and said, I think we need to, to take a look at the, the CPIs. And we ended up splitting the difference. And we, I'm proposing taking the one CPI for 2015, knowing what's coming down the pike for our priority-driven budgeting for 2016. So I can support taking the 2015 CPI. I'm not interested in taking any more than that because of the concern over the stormwater utility. And like I said earlier tonight, early, when, when you guys passed the resolution today, or you decided preliminarily not to take the CPI, I am okay with that, too, because it shows that, it shows that we're listening. You're listed, listen to the concerns of your constituents regarding the stormwater utility. You looked at the new numbers that have come in. And you have said, you know what, I don't think that we need to do this. And I'll stand with you if you, if you choose to, to do that. You know what? Government can always find a way to spend every money, every penny that's, that's given to it. And, and we can, we can find a way to, to spend it wisely. But people can only bear so much. And that's the conversation that we all need to have together.
Well, it still doesn't explain why you took the CPI. So it just goes against everything you've said for the last three years. So.
I disagree. But we can have that conversation.
Yep. But I yield the floor.
Alderman Steve Lorente.
Thank you, Chair. And just a little on that, that's not really what I wanted to chime in about, but just a little on that. I'm, I'm very gratified that we have people on the council who are questioning why the CPI is in the budget. And Mayor, I thank you for bringing a responsible budget forward. And I love the fact that we now have council people asking, why is the CPI in it? It's a wonderful, refreshing thing to hear and see because typically, from year to year, when there hasn't been a CPI in the budget, we've had council people who have tried, and at least in my opinion, their hardest to justify taking one because it wasn't in the budget. So on that end, my real reason for chiming in was because of this display here with not taking the CPI since 2010. Comes out to about $2.7 million. And here we are with a mayor who's presenting a balanced budget. And I believe the needs of the city are being taken care of. Why all the taxpayers have been able to keep $2.7 million in their pockets? I don't even know why it's a question. I don't even know why this is, we just discussed that. I yield.
Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to confirm what the mayor said. He did have three of us nominated department directors to go have a visit with him about taking the CPI. And, and then those of you that have been on council for years, those of you who are coming back, I will always tell you that from the finance perspective, you always need to take what's available to you just because we are so limited in our ability to grow our revenue. And in this case, we know, we can see some of the writing on the wall. You guys heard some of the presentations that were given during the budget process about things coming up. That's why we include that section in, in everybody's little statistical information. The, what, what do you guys need to know? What, what's coming up that we're going to need additional funding for? And if we don't start growing some of that revenue base now, we're never going to be able to meet those needs. You know, I know there's FTEs out there. I know there's equipment needs out there. This is a way to start growing that so we can, to meet those needs. And if I may, I also want to address councilperson Scott's question about, I could maybe justify this if you were saying, I'm taking the CPI to pay for this. The mayor asked us about that when we were in his office. He said, well, do I need to designate this to some, to something? And the three department directors said, absolutely not. The CPI is there for the cost of inflation. It's the cost of doing business, not changing anything we do today. Our tires have gone up, our gas has gone up, our electricity has gone up. And if we don't take the inflationary factor that we are allowed to take, we start falling behind in our purchasing power without improving our programs, buying new fleets, you know, hiring new employees. We're already behind the eight ball. And so that's why I would highly recommend that you take this $201,000 because of those additional needs, because of the additional cost of doing business. No different than in your own household. If you don't increase the revenue to meet those increasing expenses without changing anything else, you're going to fall behind. And you hear that with employees all the time, that they're, they're, they may get a 3% raise, but their insurance went up 10%. They're, they lose money. And that's what's happening here.
Alderman Ron Wifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to reserve my comments, but it's, it's a philosophical discussion that's taking place. And I understand that if you don't take it and you don't claw it back, you lose it. At the same time, I sit here and I watch the council spend, spend, spend. I understand that. But there's no regard to that when we, you're spending taxpayers' money. When you increase tax revenues, and I would argue the $7 and $6 and $9, they didn't factor in that a big percentage of Rapid City people rent houses. There's a 25% hit if you rent a house, that you've got to pay more money. We talk about affordable housing, all these subsidy programs, all this stuff. That money has to come from somewhere. And there's a tipping point. And the tipping point comes when you have $41,000 median income, median family income in your city. And you get pressures from the energy companies on both sides of your world, coming in, buying houses, renting houses, doing all these things. And they're pushing out the people, the young people in the community that are starting their jobs, all these things. So if we want to have a philosophical discussion, let's have it. But put your gloves on. Because I'm ready to have it. So if that being said, I've said my piece for tonight. And I'll be back at it Monday. Thanks.
Alderwoman Scott.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to clarify, because I know Alderman Lorente had brought it up on past council meeting and budget meetings, and the mayor had brought it up. But, and with Pauline Sumption's explanation, that's the only thing that I was questioning the mayor on is because the council has gone down this road of looking at the CPI. What is a CPI? Pauline Sumption has explained what a CPI is. But the mayor in the past has given very good indications of why Rapid City, the city of Rapid City, is different in taking the CPI. And that's because he points to his philosophy that the growth that we've experienced in property tax as far as growth, which is new construction and annexation, far outweighs the CPI. So that's where I was just asking the mayor why he included it in his budget, which goes against what he's done the last two years. It's, I don't understand it because I've gone over the revenue estimations. I don't see why this year the mayor would have included in his budget, except maybe to make us talk about it. So I'm having a hard time trying to figure out his logic. And the mayor and I have talked offline. I just thought that I'd bring it up and see if I could understand one more time why he put it in there. And as far as my mind's concerned, I still don't understand. So, thank you.
I see no other council lights. With that, I will entertain a motion to. All those in favor? Meeting adjourned.